About what we're talking about tonight. We're talking about the police department's plans to comply with the 21st century policing. There are some other things that are currently underway that we're not going to talk about tonight. For example, I know in a lot of meetings, we've had public comment on SROs and DARE and that sort of thing, and we're not going to make decisions tonight about those things. They're currently under discussion with the school district. So with that, we will call the meeting to order. And in accordance with Governor Misson's executive orders and COVID-19 pandemic protocols, this meeting is being conducted in a virtual setting using Zoom. Members of the public may view and listen to the meeting live on channel 29 and online through TV 30 and the city's website as noted in the agenda. At this point, I would like to have everybody rise and Councilmember Brown, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I'll now ask the clerk to conduct the roll call.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Narum? She's not in the room yet. Penton?
Here.
Testa?
Here.
Mayor Thorne?
Here. Okay. Tonight, we're considering acceptance of the implementation plan for key strategies from the President's Task Force on 21st Century Policing. Can we please have that?
Mayor, this is Nelson Fiallo, the city manager. Welcome to the public tonight to hear this matter. I wanted to provide a little bit of background and some context before introducing our police chief, David Swing. In July of this year, the council adopted an action plan to facilitate three things. Number one, we hosted a community listening session. The second part of that action plan included a work plan or process for review of existing police department policies and procedures. And then finally, step three is a commitment to undertake ongoing consideration of near and long-term policy goals for community policing. So we completed step one on July 21st, our community listening session, and we heard really great feedback, especially around expectations and concerns regarding the areas of mental health crisis response, use of force, and available resources for ongoing training and development of personnel. We also heard concerns regarding available resources and response activities for vulnerable populations such as our unhoused residents in our community, homeless. And finally, we heard about a continued need in this time to really invest and build legitimacy and trust. And we are certainly committed to that. Step two of the action plan began on August 20th. That was the first of two scheduled public meetings that we had scheduled for this topic. Again, like I said, this is in alignment with the approved action plan, step two. At that meeting, we reviewed the department's major use of force policies, not all of them, but some, the department's budget and call volume. And by the way, most all of that material now appears on a new website called Policing in Pleasanton. So I really look, encourage people who are tuning in maybe after the meeting to take a look. We also at that meeting provided an early introduction and recommendation on the city's mental health crisis response efforts. And in regards to the latter, it's something that with the council's direction that night, we are very excited to bring back at some point for further refinement by the council and ongoing community feedback. The concept is to shift the paradigm of crisis response from being law enforcement centric and instead more clinician-based, ENT-based for those who are going through crisis. So that's in the early development, and we have a commitment to bring that back to you in early calendar year 2021. Our second meeting is tonight, again, consistent with step two of the action plan, and it will be dedicated almost entirely to the status of the department's implementation of the President's Task Force on 21st Century Policing, which is a set of policies and recommendations published during the Obama administration. Tonight will also include a review and consideration of alternative oversight models, including a staff recommendation to establish a police chief's advisory board to advise the chief on matters of public safety, and to also recommend the expansion of the city council's role to be more involved in community policing matters and department updates, which we believe when you factor the two together will lead to more transparency and expand opportunities for public input and collaboration with the council. So with that really high-level summary, I'd like to introduce our police chief, David Swing, who will present the material that's before you tonight. David?
Good evening. Thank you, City Manager Fiallo. David Swing, your police chief, and I'm privileged to present tonight our Task Force on 21st Century Policing Implementation Plan. So good evening, Mayor, and members of the council and city staff. I'm joined tonight by our police captains, Captains Iker and Cox, and Lieutenant Munire, who all had a very critical role in the development of the information you're going to see. I'm going to start by sharing my screen because I forgot to do that here momentarily as we get a little into our presentation. I'd like to begin our presentation by reviewing the action items from the August 20th meeting, and some of these were recently covered by City Manager Fiallo. We have updated our use of force policy for the recommendations that were presented to council on August 20th, and that's available on our website, the city website, and also on the Policing in Pleasanton website, and has been disseminated to our staff, and we will continue with training on that on our next Force Options Training Day. Also, as was mentioned, we'll return to the council with your direction on an alternate response to mental health. We are beginning the work plan of that process and look forward to evaluating different programs and returning to you with a program that is going to be what we believe is the best fit for Pleasanton and for our community, and to help divert the, some of the mental health-related calls from our officers. There's a lot of excitement, I will tell you, a lot of excitement in the police department for that plan, so our officers are eagerly awaiting that program's development and implementation. We're also going to embark on a conversation with PUSD, the Pleasant and Unified School District, regarding SROs and DARE at your, at your direction, to evaluate the efficacy of those programs and to learn more about our community's interests and community's support for our officers involved, involved with our students, whether at the high schools, middle school, or in the elementary programs. One of the recommendations was to expand our training program to include autism, specifically, I think with Councilmember Brown who mentioned that, and to work with Sunflower Hill. And after that meet, I was pleased to learn that pre-COVID, we actually had a program in place and had already established that relationship, and so it was very easy for us in early September, or mid-September rather, to bring that program to our team via Zoom, much like the meetings we're having today. We held that training and will hold another training in, on October 8th to train the rest of our staff. So we're making great progress there. And then finally, as an update, one of our recommendations was the establishment of an early warning system and use of force tracking, electronic use of force tracking. We've identified a vendor that we're already working with and look forward to rolling that out and having that implemented by the end of this calendar year, if not sooner. So I just wanted to bring back some of those items as an update of what we're currently doing and is already underway. By way of background, I think City Manager Fiallo really did a great job laying out the background of where we are tonight. And this report, the 2020 report, really came from a process that happened about five years ago, and we are fortunate to have Captain Iker with us here this evening. He was instrumental in the development of that plan, and I will ask Captain Iker to talk a little bit about where we, where we were in 2016 and before, and then bring us up to date here in, in, in 2020. So Captain Iker, I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening, councilmembers. To provide some background and context to the work the police department has put into the 21st Century Policing Report, I'm going to talk a little bit about the history. So in response to civil unrest in Ferguson, Missouri in 2014, following the shooting of Michael Brown by a police officer, President Obama signed an executive order creating the President's Task Force on 21st Century Policing. The task force was comprised of 11 members, including academics, law enforcement, and civil rights activists. In May of 2015, the task force released the final report on the President's Task Force on 21st Century Policing, followed by an implementation guide for government, law enforcement, and communities in July of 2015. Department managers reviewed and discussed the task force report and found that we were already doing much of what was outlined in the report and identified in the implementation guide. Our focus was on the underlying themes or pillars as discussed in the report. Our focus was on the underlying themes. We assembled a team to work through the implementation guide and identify how we were aligned with 21st century policing concepts here at the Pleasant and Police Department, while at the same time identifying opportunities where the department could do better. Our work resulted in the police department's 2016 implementation report reflecting what implementation looked like here at the Pleasant and Police Department, identifying those key opportunities and considerations for the department moving forward. In July, the city council asked for a status update on where we are, being five years has now passed. Staff has prepared a very comprehensive document outlining our implementation plan, and Chief Swing will now provide you with an overview of the key, key elements of that plan.
Thank you, Captain Iker. As was mentioned, we had our plan in 2016, and now we're five years later wrapping up 2020, and the status update really serves as a roadmap and speaks to the collaborative work that we do in developing policing strategies with the goal, of course, of enhancing public safety and building trust between law enforcement and, and our community, the community that we're very honored to serve. And the report is divided up into six pillars, as you have seen in some of the material provided for you this evening. And each pillar represents a different facet or different component of the work that we do. Pillar one speaks to building trust and legitimacy. It emphasizes the importance of that between the police department and the community that we serve. It was, it was Sir Robert Peel who said, he's the founder of community policing, that the police are the community and the community are the police. It's really a, a, a relationship that is interdependent, and that's a really key component to what we do and our, with our policing strategies here in Pleasanton. Pillar one, an excerpt from the report itself, reads that people are more likely to obey the law when they believe that those who are enforcing it have the legitimate authority to tell them what to do. But the public confers legitimacy only on those who believe they're acting in procedurally just ways. And so procedural justice is a key component to the work that we do in policing. And our work in this area didn't begin in 2015 or 2016, when this report first came out. It has been ingrained in our department through the years, well before 2015. It's ingrained in our mission, our values, and the transparency that we have. And I think one of the key indicators of our success in this area and how we have built trust and legitimacy with our residents and our community shows in our, in our survey results. The fact that, that, that PPD has very high approval ratings is an indicator of the legitimacy that we, that we enjoy with the community and we cherish so, so, so deeply. So it's important to recognize that, that pillar one is, is a key component, and we've been working on those goals for some time. And our work doesn't stop. We recognize that it's a journey, not a destination, and we have to continue to work and strengthen that areas, in those areas. We identified 22 recommendations that are in the status update report that each of you have and is available to our community on the website. We highlighted four key recommendations from this, from those, out of those 22. And you can see here, it speaks to continuing to publish enhanced crime mapping data on our department websites, posting police stop data as identified by the Racial and Identity Profiling Act. In January of 2022, the Pleasant Police Department will be required by law to collect data on our police, on police stops, and that data will be posted by, at the state by the Department of Justice in 2023. And so we're going to make sure, of course, that information is promptly posted on our website as well, as a way of, of, of building trust with our community. We also recognize the critical component of, of, of media relations and building solid relationships with our local and regional media. And so we'll work to identify a dedicated press or public information officer and ensure that we're using subject matter experts for medias or for incidents of significant public interest. And then finally, another recommendation that we're looking, that we're looking forward to, to expanding on is how do we seek opportunities to expand and outreach to various immigrant communities? And how do we build relationships with those groups based on trust? One of the key factors that we're looking forward to, to implementing is identifying department liaisons with representatives for various immigrant communities here in town, a central focal point that, that different groups have to, to contact the, the police department. Again, building those personal relationships, which are, which, which we all know, those personal relationships are critical to establishing and building on trust. The next pillar is, is pillar two, and it speaks to policy and oversight. And it emphasizes the need to collaborate and to develop policies and strategies and partnership with our community in the, in the deployment of resources, of course, with the goal to reduce crime and by improving partnerships. And what I've learned in my limited time here is that the Pleasant Police Department has strong partnerships with the community, and the community is very quick to let us know what's going on in their neighborhoods and in their different social circles as a way to help us and partner with us to reduce, to reduce crime. And the, the task force report says, and I quote here, "If the police are to carry out their responsibilities according to established policies, the, these policies must be reflective of community values and not lead to practices that result in disparate impacts on various segments of the community. They also need to be clearly articulated to the community and implemented transparently." And in pillar two, it goes on to say that every community should define the appropriate form and structure of civilian oversight to meet the needs of that community. So again, what it's saying here is that, that each community should define, should identify what's appropriate to them or for them in their form of oversight and ensuring standards of policing that meet the specific needs of that community. And in pillar two, there were 10 different recommendations that we identified, and, and again, that's also in the report. And some of these were actually already underway today, so it's great to be able to talk about number, the, the first one here, about exploring an early warning system. But we've done the exploration, and we have decided on a, on a vendor, and we're moving towards implementation. The next recommendation there is about CIT. We are committed and have been committed long before I was fortunate to, to join this agency. We are committed to ensuring the training of our officers and dispatchers in crisis intervention training, and we're committed to using third-party subject matter experts in de-escalation to help bolster and strengthen our de-escalation training program. We have a, a robust force options program as well as other components of de-escalation like principal policing that we just had about a month or so ago, and we're committed to using third-party subject matter experts to make that program even stronger. And then finally, in pillar two, implementing the RIPA mandates in 2021 by starting the, the data collection process and returning to you as our council, as our governing body in, by March of 2022, with some of the preliminary results of that data, and benchmarking that against other agencies and what the state does in their annual RIPA report. So pillar two is about policy and oversight, and we continue to have that, that conversation. The next pillar is pillar three, and it speaks to technology and social media. And our, our technology program here is one of the strongest that I have seen. The way we use technology in new and, and innovative ways really speaks to the engagement of our officers and, and the technology savvy nature of our organization. And we recognize that, as it says here, implementing new technologies can give police departments an opportunity to fully engage and educate communities and dialogue about their expectations for transparency, accountability, and privacy. And social media is a communication tool the police can use to engage the community on issues of importance to both and to gauge community sentiment regarding agency policies and practices. And I'm, I'm reading these experts, excerpts because they come directly from the 21st Century Policing Task Force report. And to take social media first as an example, in the last nine months, we have increased the number of followers on three different social media platforms by over six, by almost 6,300. That's Facebook, Twitter, and, and Instagram. It doesn't count Nextdoor, where we have a, a significant presence as well. And what we've seen is that our social media presence is a, is a force multiplier for the city of Pleasanton. It's a way for us to engage with the community in two-way dialogue, and we've had, had examples of that. And it's also a way for us to learn about things that are, that are under the surface and maybe bubbling up. For example, it was, I believe, a Sunday afternoon when my phone rang from someone from the department to advise me of the potential looting that may have, that may occur at Stoneridge. And we learned about that through, either through an Instagram or a Facebook or some sort of social media post that was sent to us. And so again, the ability for us to use social media is, is a force multiplier, and it really helps us engage the community, and we continue to do that. We use technology in, in, in other ways. Something that we are going to roll out in the not-too-distant future is an enhanced crime mapping tool so that residents can log in, create alerts, create a search field and geo-mapping. However, before we do that, we are going to engage the community and ask the community what they want to see. What do you, as our community, want to see on your crime mapping? And what are the things that are important to you? And we're going to work with our vendor to try and replicate, probably not all, but many of the suggestions that our community has about things that they want to see. Of course, as long as we can do it from a technology standpoint, as long as we can do it from a, a, a legal authority as well. So we look forward to our engagement around technology, recognize the importance of that in our profession. And there are three pillars. I think we, we've kind of touched on a couple of these already, like the methods to encourage public engagement, assessing new technologies that could better serve those with special needs. For example, I was at a meeting today, and I learned that we'll likely be able to go live with text to 911 in January of 2021, and we can talk more about that at, at another time. But then again, there's just more technology to help serve those with special needs or disabilities. And of course, enhancing technology that increases access and, and builds community trust. And there's different programs that we're going to look at to do just that. The next is pillar four, and this is really about community policing and, and crime prevention. And when we look at pillar four, the task force report reads that community policing combines a focus on intervention and prevention through problem-solving with building collaborative partnerships between law enforcement agencies and schools, social services, and other stakeholders. And that, in this way, community policing not only improves public safety, but also enhances social connectivity and economic strength, which increases community resilience to crime. Community resilience to crime is critical to building communities that have an enhanced or a strong feeling of safety. We know that crime will occur. Our community needs to be resilient when it does to recognize that, that, and it had that, that relationship with the police department based on trust that establishes resiliency when, when crime does happen. We have done, community policing is not, it's not a, a segment in our organization. We have a youth and community services unit. We have a crime prevention officer. Community policing is woven into the fabric of our culture and of our organization, and whether that's through our volunteer programs, through our school resource officers and DARE, through our officers walking downtown, saying hello at the farmer's market, walking in or being present out at, at Stoneridge and, and other venues. It truly is a part of who we are as an organization. And our alternate response to mental health is another opportunity for us to expand our, our community policing strategies. And so some of our recommendations here, there were 20 recommendations in, in this pillar. This just shows you that, that the work that we're looking forward to doing related to community policing. We will continue to host community meetings with diverse communities. We've already done this at the synagogue at Beth Meck and also at the Muslim Community Center. We have engaged with our Spanish-speaking community, and we look to expand and grow those programs in the, in the coming, in the coming months and years. We recognize it's important for us to continue to engage with our schools, and we'll do that by sharing the task force recommendations with PUSD to look for youth-led alternatives to school discipline, which, which, by the way, in preparing this report, I learned that in the last three years, our school resource officers only made, made 80 arrests over a period of three years at, at, at all of our schools. And so when we look at that on the aggregate, that speaks to the work that our SROs are doing today and have done historically to, to look for alternatives to citation and arrest when involved with, with our, our, our youth in schools. And then finally, continue our collaboration with PUSD to develop a memorandum of understanding or an MOU that more clearly defines the roles and responsibilities of, of our SROs. And so again, there were 20 recommendations. We listed five out for you this evening, and we look forward to continuing our work around community policing and, and crime prevention. Pillar five is, is the next, and it focuses on expanding responsibilities of law enforcement and highlighting the effectiveness of, of diversity, of diversity in, in training. And the, the report speaks to this by saying that new approaches to recruitment, hiring, evaluation, and promotion are also essential to developing a more highly educated workforce with the character traits and social skills that enable effective policing and positive community relationships. And to be effective in an ever-changing world, training must continue throughout an officer's career. And what this speaks to in my mind is that training is a dosage, not an inoculation. Do we have to continue to maintain training over time? It's not a one-time, a type of event, especially in, in areas of de-escalation, in, in other force options as well, and, and also in terms of implicit bias and procedural justice. And so we have, to this end, what this looks like in Pleasanton is that we've updated our hiring model, so we have a more evaluative model during the hiring process. We have placed a priority, as has the entire city of Pleasanton. I am impressed that the city, capital C, has really supported the development of, of our employees and our staff through education, and that we, I've seen this at all levels. I, I've seen someone use or work with the city and use the resources of the city to complete his associate's degree, complete his bachelor's degree, and now most recently complete his master's degree. I've seen others complete, other higher education as well. And so this is really reinforced in our organization, about placing a priority and importance on training and education. And then finally, training, of course, occurs at all levels with our volunteers, with our community through the Citizens Police Academy, and, and through, through de-escalation. And pillar five had three recommendations, and we really wanted to focus on one. We look forward to in the, in the coming months or 12 months or at, at some point in the, in the near future, having a third party come in for department-wide inclusiveness training focusing on the LGBTQ plus community to, 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 to bring awareness and to ensure that we have very inclusive culture in our organization. And then pillar six, before we, we wrap up here and move on to another topic, it really emphasizes the support and of officer wellness. It really emphasizes the support of officer wellness and also a multi-partner effort. And the report speaks to "the wellness and safety of law enforcement officers is critical not only to themselves, their colleagues, and their agencies, but also to public safety. And an officer's capabilities, judgment, and behavior are adversely affected by poor physical and psychological health, not only may be of little use to the community he or she serves, but also may be a danger to the community and to other officers." And what this speaks to is that an officer who doesn't take care of him or herself, either physically or mentally, may not only be of little use to the community, but may also actually be a liability. And officer wellness is more than just physical wellness. You've identified in our recommendation here that officer wellness is physical, mental, and financial wellness, because each of those are different stressors. And we know that physical wellness supports mental wellness. There are plenty of research studies that show that exercise is good for mental health as well as physical health. And unfortunately, we know that in public safety, both fire and police, their suicide rate is high. In fact, we lose more officers to suicide than we do to gunshots and collisions combined. And so, the need for mental wellness and physical wellness and financial wellness is critical to the success of our organization, to our community, and to our profession. We do this in different ways, whether it be through peer support or counselors, the Blue Courage program, which has a component of mindfulness. And we look forward to expanding this program even more as we care for the guardians, for those that care for our community. So that wraps up our six pillars as it relates to President Obama's 21st Century Policing Task Force Report. The next part of our presentation is about quality assurance methods and community input and oversight models. And Mayor Thorne, I did know this was a good opportunity to break for questions here. If you wanted to wait until the end of our entire presentation and take questions on the entire section.
Why don't we wait till the end? I think that works out a little bit better in this virtual model.
You got it, sir. So in the staff report, we speak to different community input and oversight models. And again, this is the police department turning back to you as a council with your request to review community input and oversight. And there are three specific models that are evaluated in the staff report, the first being a police commission, an independent police auditor or IPA, and then the third being the addition of a police chief's advisory board, as well as additional reporting to you as the council as the oversight body. And so, when we look at a police commission, it's a board of community members, as it says, appointed by the council. And the authority of the commission may include the city manager's appointment of a police chief or listed candidates, and it may also include the authority to terminate a police chief, as well as to have recommendations or authority for policies of the police department. And when we look at cities with a police commission, it's typically larger cities like Oakland or Richmond has a form for police commission, Seattle, San Francisco, and Los Angeles and others. So the commission is one of the models that exist today. The next is an independent police auditor or IPA. The IPA is separate from a police department and, of course, appointed by the council. It's a separate office from the police department. And there are different models that exist in this realm as well. Commonly, those models include auditing complaint investigations, reviewing use-of-force reports, making recommendations on policies and procedures, and then presenting reports to council directly, whether it be on personnel investigations or use of force. Locally, some of the cities that have an IPA model include Palo Alto, the City of San Jose, and the City of Davis. And then finally, a police chief's advisory board, established under the direction of the council, or it can also be established directly by staff. The chief's advisory board is axed in advisory capacity, reviewing topics, as it says there, on use of force and mental health. And there's a list identified in the staff report. It'll also include other topics that come up along the way that aren't necessarily highlighted in the report or highlighted in this presentation. And the advisory board, the key here is it's an opportunity for input for the community, and it's comprised of a diverse cross-section of community members. And diversity doesn't just mean racial or ethnic diversity. It should be diversity of age, diversity of backgrounds, diversity of socioeconomic status in the community, could be business members as well. But one of the key or critical success factors is the diverse cross-section of the community. There are several Bay Area cities similar in size and activity, some even a little bit busier than Pleasanton, that have a chief's advisory board. And the board works in conjunction with the council to provide input on matters of importance to the community. So the board will work in conjunction, actually, with the chief, with me or my successor, the chief's office, to provide input and the council to provide input on significant matters. And so, the recommendations are outlined in the report is to ask for your acceptance of the department's advancing 21st Century Policing Status Update and to establish a police chief's advisory board that would advise the chief on matters of public safety as well as direct staff to return twice a year at a minimum, or as deemed appropriate by you, to return to provide input on matters of community policing and department updates to the city council. So what that would do is that would expand the frequency of reports back to council so that you had more information and more frequent information, up-to-date information about the police department, policing strategies, and current issues that are facing the city as it relates to policing. Of course, the frequency of reports is dependent upon council preference, and the recommendation of a police chief's advisory board is interchangeable with other models. If it were your direction, you could insert or insert other models as well, as opposed to a chief's advisory board if you wanted to go a different direction. That being said, I recognize that this topic has a lot of interest in our community. It has a lot of interest, of course, on the council, has a lot of interest in our police department. And I look forward to a good conversation and a robust and civil discourse and conversation about what we're going to have this evening. And I'm confident that those in public comment and others will respect that same desire as well. So with that, Mr. Mayor and council, I am looking forward to any questions that you may have.
Okay. Since we're in a virtual model, I will ask my colleagues individually if they have any questions or clarifying questions of staff. And we'll start off with Councilmember Brown.
Nice. Thank you for going back and doing a summary of the implementation of the items that the council had requested. So I did have a few questions, and they'll bounce around a little bit because you covered some items, and so I don't need to ask them. A few, step back just a little bit. I know trust is a big part of the discussion that we're having today. So I was asked by a resident, can you describe the policy that we have right now if a resident was to submit a concern or a complaint to the police department? And is that being addressed through the policies that you're reviewing and the offers through the pillars of six pillars?
So our current complaint review model, there are different ways that someone could submit a complaint or a compliment about an officer's conduct. And that is either online at our website. They can call dispatch and ask to speak to a supervisor as well. They may also submit a complaint through our human resources department at City Hall, or they may even call my office. But more commonly, much like in other professions, the most common way we receive complaints of officer conduct is through the watch commander, which is the first-line supervisor or manager.
Somebody would call the non-emergency number and speak to the manager or captain or -- okay, thank you. In pillar four, you talked about engaging a number of different groups, PDA, for example, in the business community. But I didn't hear things like NAMI or the Alameda County Mental Health Group that we have here on Santa Rita. Is that part of your outreach to the mental health? Because obviously, mental health and supplementing police department with mental health experts has been discussed many, many times by this council, and I just wondered about that relationship with those types of organization in addition to Sunflower Hill and others.
So the question, as I understand it, is does our outreach include beyond the traditional community groups of the chamber, the Downtown Association, and other business groups and Rotary, et cetera? And the answer to that is yes. Our outreach will include those groups, working with Access or Horizons or others to have the best perspective, if you would, as we develop our alternate response to mental health. Clearly, many of those groups will be involved in that conversation. I don't know specifically each of those will be involved. However, clearly, mental health providers and practitioners are critical to the development of a successful program.
Absolutely. When I read on the attachment, page 1-17, referred to, there's a goal to add more sworn officers to the CIT program. And I'm familiar with CIT, Crisis Intervention Training 1 and 2. Have 100% of your officers been through Crisis Intervention 1? And if not, what portion of your officers have been through that, your sworn officers?
At one point, we were at 100%. However, we have had some attrition. And today, we're at about 85% additionally. But for COVID, we would be much higher than that because we have had officers scheduled to attend the CIT training. However, we were unable to send them due to COVID restrictions and trying to maintain, obviously, the physical health of our officers and of our organization. And it's also important to note that CIT is a training program as opposed to a specific special duty, if you would. And so, by having all of our officers trained, each patrol officer would have that CIT training.
Okay. Thank you. On page 1-18, there is a term for a serious incident review board. What I'm not quite sure is about this serious incident review board. Are we talking about a review by untrained citizens? Or are we talking about a review by some professional staff members? I know I'm jumping around, but I was taking notes as I was reading it.
Sure. The serious incident review board is recommended in the task force report, is comprised of sworn staff and community members to review officer-involved shooting cases and identify administrative training or policy issues. That's not a plan that we have in place here in Pleasanton, and I'm not familiar with many agencies that have such a program in place in California. So when I look at that, we need to assess some of the legal and administrative feasibility around potential confidentiality issues and things of that nature before we can really explore implementing a program of that nature. It's not something that we would be able to do in the immediate future, for sure.
Okay. You referred to it in your presentation, but I had a note, early warning systems. You said that there is or will be an outside contractor doing that. I'm just curious why that wouldn't happen internally as officers do their job and that maybe an issue comes up or a question and that it would be handled internally. But I thought you referred to an outside organization or software program.
An early intervention system is a holistic approach to evaluating officers and their exposure to high-risk incidents. And so, that's not a capacity that many agencies have internally, and most agencies will use one of several different software providers to help perform that assessment and that monitoring.
Oh, I see. It's a software provider system. It's not an individual or an organization. Thank you. That helps. I appreciate that you said the officers are very interested in mental health experts, and I think you've explained how that would happen. You had a note, and I realize this will come back to us, but if you want to redirect for later, that's fine. PUSD School, there was a note about avoid conflict and redirect energy and refocus learning. So do you intend on that coming back in greater detail after we have some sort of plan in place with PUSD?
Yeah, I think that's a conversation we need to have with PUSD. I'm not familiar with that specific recommendation off the top of my head, but if anything related to PUSD is clearly something that we need to engage with them in a conversation on.
Okay. My last question is the Blue Courage training. It sounds like an extremely important program for all of our officers. And it was unclear in the report. Are we doing that now, or is that something you want to implement for the future?
Yeah, that's something that we've done in the past, and I'd like Captain Iker, if you could, just to expand that a little bit more through his experience and his participation in that program. That was before my time here, and so I think Captain Iker has some good insights to share.
All righty. Blue Courage, we brought them back in, or brought them into the organization back in 2017, and it was a two-day training program, excuse me, that we put the entire organization through. And it's really about mindfulness and wellness of the officers. So that way, they're looking at the stressors of the job and working through those stressors to be able to identify them themselves, to work towards resolving those when they go out on the job. So for instance, if I have a bad day, I'm not taking my bad day and pushing that forward to the community that I'm trying to serve at the same time. So we do Blue Courage. We also have another program that we send folks to, which is Dr. Gil Martin, and that's a one-day program also for officers, which really is about them and their families and the wellness and building that together, because a lot of officers will take that stress home with them and take it out on their family. So it's really about how to work through all those issues that you're dealing with on a daily basis based upon the stress of the job.
Thank you, and that sounds extremely important. Not only do you bring your family life home, but you don't want your family life to come to work, too. They really have to be separate, right? I guess I do have one follow-on question. Chief, you mentioned that citizen advisory board, that would be the chief's citizen advisory board, would interface with the council, but it wasn't clear exactly how that would happen. I know there was a comment about coming twice a year to the city council. Would that happen in a small group setting as well, or would it be more formalized in your mind, in your concepts?
In my concept, it's the chief reporting back to council on policing strategies and crime trends, use-of-force issues, complaints, et cetera, whatever the council felt they needed more information on, as a way of the council providing additional oversight of the police department.
If you were to say this entire policy in the 21st century, that your goal is to build trust in your community and better officers, or what would be your overall goal of this? Because we're all going through a lot of effort and work, and whenever the city asks the staff to go through a lot of effort for something, we step back and go, really, what is our goal? And if you could put it in just like a sentence or two, what do you think the goal of implementing these 21st century plans are? goal of implementing these 21st century plans are?
I think the primary goal is twofold. It's to strengthen the trust that's already in place in Pleasanton. That ties back to police legitimacy and procedural justice, which is an internal and external paradigm. And then, secondly, to strengthen our community policing approach. Again, I what I've seen here is is a strong community policing model. And even things that are strong can still be strengthened, much like building trust. It's strong with our community, and I think that we can continue to work and strengthen that. And so as I look at what we the goals of what we roll out is really around strengthening community policing and strengthening trust with those who are honored to serve.
Excellent. All right. Thank you very much. That was great. Perfect. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt. We were having some technical difficulty at the beginning of the meeting. I just want to acknowledge that Vice Mayor Narum had joined the meeting, but you can't see her, but she's definitely here as a panelist.
Okay. Councilmember Testa, you have clarifying questions?
You're muted.
Yeah, thank you. And Carla, you made it easier because you covered a lot. So I still have a lot, but less due to your questions. Thank you. I would like to start with pillar one, number one. One of the primary tenets of the 21st century policing is law enforcement culture should embrace a guardian mindset and adopt procedural justice as the guiding principle. Could you, Chief, explain what a guardian mindset looks like? What that means?
To me, a guardian mindset is someone who is a caretaker of the community and someone who who works in partnership with the community to make decisions that are in the best interest of safety, in our case, and and service. And I think that we do that in in several different ways. And I have seen that in some of our watch reports. Unfortunately, at the moment, it escapes my my recollection. But I do know that that is a true critical part of of our culture.
Okay, thank you. That sounds a little different than my understanding. I but I'll maybe we can address that later. The on 1.3, again, pillar one, establish culture of transparency and accountability. I just wanted to really take a minute there and compliment the improvement on the website and the transparency, the huge leap in transparency that that has provided to the community. I haven't even gotten through all of the information. I've taken it in chunks, and there's still more to to look at. And there's a lot there. And I really appreciate that. So I don't have a question there. I just wanted to at least acknowledge that. And procedural justice. Can you give the seat because that's on 1.4? What what is procedural justice?
Procedural justice is having legitimacy with the community that we serve. The community, if you would, giving the authority to the police department to be policed by the police department because they are viewed as legitimate in their eyes. And procedural justice occurs both internally within our organization and also externally in in how we police with the with the authority given to us by the community.
Okay. All right, thank you. 1.4 focuses on emphasizing spirit of the law versus letter of the law. Let's see, police department. I you and I discussed that a little bit earlier, I think. And I liked I like that because I think it's important to look at the spirit and intent. Did you want to explain that a bit? How you see that from the department's perspective? Because it's kind of surprising to see that. You think of a department, it's going to be very black and white. But to see it in writing and that the recommendation is the police department focuses on emphasizing the spirit of the law versus the letter of the law.
Sure. I think that that's exemplified by our traffic officers, our patrol officers, and making traffic stops. And I think that a real key component of that is what I referenced earlier. For a city our size serving a district the size of the Pleasant Unified School District over three years to for our SROs, of which we have, of course, two school resource officers, to have only issued 80 citations or made 80 arrests speaks to the spirit of the law, that our SROs are not not applying the violations that they may encounter in a strict black and white letter of the law way. And so I think that's probably the best example I can give about the spirit of the law approach.
You know, I I have to say, to say only 80 arrests at our schools, that doesn't I that kind of surprises me because that seems like a lot. And my concern has been that some of those arrests in past, maybe my generation, would have been detentions, perhaps. And so it does concern me that we do, I think, quite a lot of arrests on our school campuses. And so I'm going to fast forward. A community member asked me, and on 1.8, it talks about our department's diversity. But it did not say I I have shared with the community that I had heard from our HR department that we do have a we have made an effort to have a diverse department. But we didn't put the the breakdown in here. Is that available? Is that available on our wonderful new website, perhaps?
No, that's not available on our our website today. And I would say that we have made an effort, and we have some strong results to show for that. We look forward to continuing to increase our diversity in in the organization at all levels, and we're committed to working on that.
Okay, okay. Well, thank you. I would like to know. So maybe I can ask that you somebody send me that breakdown. So there was a a suggestion, let's see, identify a method of surveying recipients of police services in a timely manner. That was 1.7. I was confused on recipients of police services. Are we surveying people who have been arrested? Are we survey surveying people who have made calls for service like property crimes and such? What is what are we talk? Who are we talking about when we're talking about surveying recipients of police services?
Well, this would this would be to explore and to identify a method to survey those who we've had contact with. The more common methodology for that is to survey those, say, for example, victims of crime, those who have called the police department to request services. So it's it's more commonly those groups.
Okay, so that would be a rather one sided survey because those are going to be people who have had contacts who are feeling very favorable to the police as opposed to a broader survey that might be people who are less happy with the service they were provided? Is that acknowledged in the survey? Because I I mean, I've had a lot of people comment on our community survey, which shows very high that we have a high satisfaction in the community, which, of course, we should because we have low crime, a lovely community. But even at 90%, those are people who are probably haven't had a direct contact with police. And so it's kind of an a limited perspective that you're getting. So you're doing another survey that really is going to be a very limited perspective. And how is that survey intended to be used?
Well, I think that to your to your earlier question about survey respondents and if they would have a favorable impression or not. I know in talking with our our staff and our team here, that it's it's common for someone, because they're treated with dignity and respect, even after being arrested, for them to thank the officer for their professionalism and for the dignity that the officer showed to them, even having to even while even having to be arrested. And I also know from my personal experience that sometimes, unfortunately, victims of of crime, if if not treated well, will not have a favorable impression of of the police department. So I think that it's it's more about the dignity and respect that our officers and dispatchers and community service officers show to our community, regardless of the position that that person finds themselves in. So I that you speak about the survey, I think it's really emblematic of our of our organization. The second part of your question, if you would please remind me, I it slipped my mind.
Well, first, I want to say that I I do agree. I I think our officers, I think this report makes very clear the expectation of professionalism and courtesy and respect. And I I think that that is absolutely a very strong component in our department. My question was how that survey is intended to be used if it is really a very one sided perspective. I just, what is that? The results intended to be used for?
I think it'll help us evaluate how those who those who are consumers, those who have been recipients of our service in a timely in a timely manner feel about their interactions with us. And we would use that holistically to evaluate the work we're doing and ensure that we're meeting community expectations.
Okay. And I think that's fair. I think it just has to be very clear who the recipients of the or who the participants in the survey were. So I'm going to jump ahead to pillar three, which is technology and social media. I've had a couple of questions from people in the community about what kind of technology and surveillance is used. I've been asked some things that I think are a little extreme, like does the police department keep a file on residents? So I'll ask you to answer that in a minute. And what kind of I know that we just recently approved the license plate readers. And do we have facial recognition? And someone specifically asked me to question whether PPD uses the stingray technology? And what about drones? And so there you go, please.
So as I was hearing that, I was thinking, no, 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 and no. No, we don't have keep files on on individuals. No, we don't. That one escaped me. We don't. We don't have drones.
No, no. So we don't do any drone surveillance?
We we do not have drones. Well, I'm being fully transparent here. If we have a critical incident, we will use drone programs from other agencies to assist in our apprehension or safety of the community and safety of our officers. So for example, our our tactical team, if needed, will use drones from other agencies to assist in their deployment to safeguard people in the home and safeguard our officers. So we the PPD, the Pleasant Police Department, does not have a drone program at this time. We don't use facial recognition. We don't keep files on individuals. And we don't use us, we don't have a stingray device for cellphone tracking.
Was that a qualified answer? Do we we don't use the stingray technology at all?
Well, actually, I'm not.
No.
Yeah, no, we don't.
Okay. Okay. And but we do have the license plate readers.
Yes, we do. And we have found great success in the license plate readers for the apprehension of stolen vehicles and and wanted subjects.
Really? And wanted subjects? Okay. So because that was a a big expense. And so that's active and successful. Okay. Pillar four, we have 4.1.1 adopt preferences for seeking least harm resolutions. I just think that's really significant. You and I discussed that earlier. Could you just give a quick overview of what that's what that means?
Well, it it goes back to, I think, one of the original questions about sphere of the law and letter of the law. And in the in the report, it's identified as as least harm. And in the in the the narrative below that, it speaks to sphere of the law, letter of the law, how it's part of our post training curriculum. We have a minor offense court for qualified first time juvenile offenders for non serious offenses, again, diverting them from the away from the juvenile justice system. And that can be consequences such as a community service or writing an essay. So again, that's aligned with a a a least harm methodology for those cases.
Okay. I think that's really positive. I I know it comes out of the 21st century policing, and it's something I always thought was the first time I read it, I was impressed from a law enforcement perspective that that was recognized. I will I I will just address the pillar six, the Blue Courage Training, I thought was I was really impressed by that. I think that the peer support for PTSD, mental health and emotional support for our officers, I was impressed by that. And so I will zip ahead to the the recommendation for establishing a police chief advisory board. Is that intended to be Pleasanton's version of oversight, civilian independent oversight?
I think I reflected on this conversation from earlier today. I think that when we think about chief's advisory board, it's really a a a model or an opportunity for community input. And oversight still rests with you as as the council. And it it helps to inform the department, and specifically the chief and the the leadership of the organization on issues of importance in our community.
Okay. And Councilmember Brown did in her question, brought up something that I was going to bring attention to also because in that it identifies that the police chief will select members, and it did have a an overview that included a lot of very political looking organizations. And it did miss our nonprofits. And in the 21st century policing task force recommendations, NAMI is specifically named and other I was glad you mentioned Access and Horizon. So I So I was I'm going to, something that I shared with, I think you, you did get my email with the 13 principles, Chief Swin.
Yes, I did.
Okay. So on the 13 principles for effective oversight, the first one is independence for independent oversight. But and it it really stresses that civilian oversight needs to be independent. And that is very much a primary tenet of the 21st century policing. In fact, in pillar 2.8, it's a recommendation, some form of civilian oversight and law enforcement is important in order to strengthen trust with the community. So the form, the, I think that the chief advisory board is really a very positive and a good thing. And I think it fits very nicely in pillar four. What was that, 4.5.3? I think it's, it's a very positive thing. I like the police chief advisory board, but it is not in any way oversight. So I just wanted to clarify that. And I will stop there. Thank you, Chief.
Vice Mayor Narum, are you out there? Vice Mayor Narum, are you out there?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm here. So I missed probably half of the presentation due to no internet, so number didn't work, et cetera. So I may, some of this may have been covered. On page five of the attachment, it references the fact that the department has two post-certified procedural justice instructors allowing for more department training, you know, than what's mandated. And so I was wondering for the chief, if, Chief, if you see this as a good thing and and if this is something that you would try to maintain going forward that you, you know, because the officers obviously retire at some point, that you would try to have people in place with the certification, certification?
Yes, you are correct, Vice Mayor, that we do have to continue to keep our instructor cadre up to date. And to that end, we're adding two more to that group for a total of four because we believe that we need to continue not only with the depth of instructors, but a depth of knowledge of the subject matter.
Okay. So I just, I guess what caught me was I was wondering why you wouldn't have that listed as the next step to, you know, to maintain that on your staff? I'm just curious. I mean, I guess maybe I'm being a little nitpicky, but it seems really important.
Sure. It is important. It's something that we do in all of our training, all of our instructor cadre, whether it's principal policing, first aid, de-escalation, force options, domestic violence and others. And so I think it's just a part of what we do organizationally.
Okay. But you do agree, you do agree that that's important and something to maintain or that, you know, a goal to keep people trained or certified?
Absolutely. And I've learned that's an organizational priority as well, not just my own, but of our entire organization.
Okay. And then moving on to recommendation 1-9 about building trust, particularly with the immigrant community and so forth. And I was wondering, as you hire, if consideration in candidates, whether or not they have a second language that's present in our community is a consideration in your evaluation for hiring?
Yes, as we evaluate candidates for different roles, we recognize that the ability to communicate with our community is of critical importance. And if someone is monolingual in a language other than English, we, it's best for us to be able to talk with them in their native language. And so if we have, we're looking at two candidates as an example, and one is bilingual and a language commonly spoken here in Pleasanton, then that person has a leg up, so to speak, in the hiring process.
Okay. Good. Then moving on, this was touched on earlier by others, but the diversity of the department in recommendation 2.5, you know, my impression of my contact with, you know, different officers is that, you know, there's been a real effort to make the department diverse and, you know, and mirror the community, I think, which is important. And in recommendation 2.5, where it talks about, you know, making available the diversity, it says the recommendation is being considered. And I just, I was curious why this isn't something you would just do, particularly now that we've got the website up that I think people are looking at and really appreciating for the, you know, the information and the transparency?
Yeah, I think the the real reason behind it being explored is that the original report that Captain Iker was involved in developing was about a six-month project. In this report, we didn't have the opportunity to really dig into a lot of the details and make decisions about some of those different topic areas. That's why it's an explore. Other agencies do post their demographic data either on the annual report or other means. And so it is something that we are certainly going to consider going forward.
Okay. But you see making that available ultimately?
I do see
That's a question.
Right. I do see the importance of that, yes.
Okay. And then I think it's on page 43 of the attachment in pillar five, and this has been touched on a little bit, but the feedback I had from people, you know, connected to Sunflower Hill and the on the autistic training and everything was incredibly positive or viewed as incredibly positive. And I was wondering why that wouldn't be listed here, you know, somehow as a action item in that it not get lost? You know, obviously, it's not something you're going to do every month, but, you know, every other year or some kind of timeframe, why that wouldn't be included, given the opening of the Sunflower Hill community in particular?
Yeah. Excuse me. In the, my initial remarks, we talked about some autism training that recently occurred here at the police department. And we, pre-COVID, we actually had the training lined up with Sunflower Hill. And we brought them in in early September or mid-September to do that training virtually via Zoom. And we'll, and we'll host that training again in in October, October 8th, I believe. And so it is, well, I don't know the frequency of it. I don't know that we'll do it every other year. It is something that we have done that we will continue to do as, as needed.
Okay. But I guess I mean, biggest concern, I don't want to get into what the frequency should be because I'm not, I'm not sure I'm qualified to say that, but I'm just more interested that that doesn't get lost somehow. I mean, I, because one of the things that's kind of mind-boggling to me is all the different kinds of trainings that the officers are required to go through ongoing. And you kind of wonder, you know, when do they have time to be a police officer in some respects? But obviously, that's getting managed. But I guess that's really my big question on that, on that, on that pillar.
Yeah, you are correct that there is a lot of training that our officers and dispatchers and others complete. We have a commitment to that investment. And we complete it in different ways. Sometimes it's online, sometimes it's while on duty. We have six training days throughout the year for our officers and others to help to complete some of that training. At the same time, we also recognize that a well-trained department is a more professional department. And so we're committed to that investment.
Okay. Great. And then I think my final question is on the citizens advisory board. It didn't address when you make the appointments or, you know, you get your applications and based on, you know, the different cross-section of the community you select. And it didn't really discuss how long those appointments would be for or how you envision, you know, rolling over or turning over to continually bring, you know, more people in
Right.
to the process or to the discussion?
And you bring up a good point. We haven't identified the details and the, how that board would be formed on the, on the detail level. That's something that we would explore how other agencies have developed their chief's advisory board. Fortunately, we're not having to develop this in a vacuum. Other agencies have gone before us and we will use their successes in the, in the development of ours and their lessons learned in the development of ours. And I'm sure we will address the issue of turnover, making sure that the board doesn't all turn over all at once, that we stagger those, those term or those appointment dates as best we can and ensure, of course, we have a board that most represents Pleasanton.
Okay. So and I guess my final just comment is that I don't know who was involved in putting this together because I missed the introduction, but I mean, I, there's obviously been a lot of time and thought into the information in our staff report. And I just, I want to acknowledge that and say thank you or appreciate, you know, that work that was done because I'm sure it was not easy and took a lot of thought.
Thank you, yes. There were several people involved in this. Lieutenant Munai or Lieutenant Schleyhuber are captains, Captains Cox and Iker, as well as other city staff like Deputy City Manager Pam Ott, Brian Dolan. So there's a list of many people who had very key roles in helping us develop what you have before you today.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Penton, do you have clarifying questions?
Well, I had a whole list of questions and pretty much they've been asked and I'm not quite sure I'll ask them again. I do want a couple of things. I know we've had retirements in our department and my impression is we have a younger department now. And with COVID over the last six months, has, has, I know training has been interrupted by COVID, but do you feel, especially as you've adhered to the 21st century policing, that you've been able to take these younger officers, these new officers along the training path or is this, has this been pushed as well just because of COVID?
Has the 21st century policing been, been, been pushed?
Not necessarily 21st policing, but I mean, a lot of the things that we're stating here in the CIT training, that sort of thing, has it been, we're going to get, we usually do this in a group, we can't do groups. And we usually have somebody come from the outside, we can't have somebody come in. So are we, are we kind of waiting this out and maybe this will give you more time to have new training methods and procedures?
Yeah, I think in some areas, we are waiting it out, especially if it requires multiple agencies coming together like CIT as an example. We have found great success most recently with a Zoom training using breakout groups. In fact, our facilitators said there is at times more dialogue and conversation virtually than we have in person at times. Additionally, a lot of the training and areas in the 21st Century Policing document speak about organizational culture. And through our field training program, that organizational culture is still passed on. We have a great history of hiring lateral or officers from other agencies. And we have been able to maintain the Pleasanton way through the, by even in bringing on officers who have experiences from other agencies. So a lot of the 21st century policing concepts are really ingrained into who we are as a department. And so while the formal training may have paused, the informal simulation into Pleasanton continues.
So with, with the recommendation for a citizens advisory or chief's advisory board, you've been a chief for a long time. You've been in Pleasanton for just a few months. Have you had a citizens or a chief's advisory board before?
I have not. I have spoken with other chiefs throughout the region that have implemented a chief's advisory board, but I have not implemented that program myself.
So when we look at the various kinds that you mentioned today, when, as being new to Pleasanton, what do you see as the most important part of forming this board?
I think that the critical component is being able to hear from communities that we aren't hearing from today and to hear their impressions of Pleasanton, to help them understand policing as well. So it's kind of a two-way communication there. And to receive their input on our policing strategies and how those strategies impact the communities that they represent, whether it be a young person, a business individual, a member of an immigrant community. And so I think it's, it's the input that will be exceptionally helpful for us.
And I, I've had a lot of different questions and they got answered. But and the last one in, in looking at the implementation of expanding on the 21st century policies, but also the chief's advisory board, has this been vetted through the department down into the rank and file with the union members?
Yeah, we have, I have shared the plan with the organization. And I've been in contact with others throughout the department. And, you know, I know that there is, I would describe our department, I have before in a meeting, as a high-trust organization. There's high trust in the, in the leadership. And I think that that speaks to the direction that, that the report recommends.
All right. Well, thank you, Chief. Those are all the questions I have, Mayor. Thank you.
A lot of great questions. As a matter of fact, you only left me with one. And Chief, as you were going through your presentation, you chose three or four things to work on out of 20-something. And I think if the person hasn't read the staff report, they might get the wrong impression. So isn't it true that a lot of those recommendations are already being implemented?
That is true. Many of the recommendations have been implemented even prior to 2015 because they're just how we have done policing in Pleasanton for quite some time. It's important to keep in mind that the president's report is a nationwide report and that California usually is at the tip of the spear of professional policing in our, in our nation. And so many of the, the recommendations that are here, again, are, have already been in place for a period of time and are in many agencies throughout California.
I just don't want to leave people with the impression that you picked three out of 22. Okay. At this point in time, I will open the public hearing. We have 29 speakers, so I'd please be reminded that your comments are limited to three minutes. A timer will appear on the screen and I ask that once it turns yellow, you begin to wrap up your comments. Madam Clerk, have there been any requests submitted to speak on this item?
Yeah.
First of nine.
Our first speaker is Joe Reed, followed by Mark Fisher.
Thank you very much. I presume you can hear me just fine?
Yes.
I'll start with, you know, the first listening sessions that we had this past summer. And it appeared to me that our community was going to overreact to a situation that only mildly applied to the town of Pleasanton. And at that time, I was thinking, I have a dear friend in Chicago, but if my friend in Chicago's son was diagnosed with cancer, I would not take my son for chemotherapy treatment. The same thing applies here. And what it appears is our police department and our city management and our city council has taken the same approach, that if the medicine is not needed to heal a sickness that we have in Pleasanton, then we put it on the shelf until we do need it. And I'd like to thank all of you for doing that on behalf of the city of Pleasanton. I think that's commendable. I would also like to make just a comment because I thought what I was going to be making tonight was a different set of observations. Throughout all of the implementation guidelines of the 21st Century Policing Task Force the implementation guidelines of the 21st century policing task force, throughout there it says, these are items that different communities can do. Each of the pillars are items that a community can do. In no case did the study say, these are the items that every community must do. And again, I'd like to commend what I've seen so far for our town adapting those items, not just now, but five years ago, that were the right items for Pleasanton to do for our town. And that being said, I really don't need the rest of my time. I'd just like to thank you for what you've done for the city of Pleasanton.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Mark Fisher, followed by Sahana Kumar.
This spring, Pleasanton Police responded to an emergency call about a man attacking a woman. He beat her, he bit her, he flogged her with a cord of an iron, he choked her while promising to kill her. The police arrested him. As for his victim, she just wants to get away from him forever, recover from the trauma and get on with her life. But she has nothing, no money, no food, no car, no place to stay. A Pleasanton nonprofit assisted her to receive $2,000 from the California Victims Compensation Board to relocate. She'd also receive free counseling. For her, those funds are the difference between homelessness and shelter, between hunger and groceries, quite possibly the difference between life and death. She just needed one more form. It's a simple one though, about 10 minutes to complete, required to be signed by a police officer from the crime scene. So her advocate goes to the Pleasanton Police on her behalf for a routine form to be filled out, one that is completed by a police all across the state, for resources that the law requires all police departments to help crime victims obtain. But the Pleasanton Police Department simply refuses. It's just something that it does not, will not do. The department does not fill out victim verification forms and it does not have a Cal VCB liaison officer despite state codes requiring both. Now, there have been hundreds of Pleasanton victims over the last five years in 691 cases of domestic violence, sex offenses and rape. From 2018 to 2019, domestic violence increased 25%, sexual offenses increased 24% and forcible rapes doubled. All those victims, beloved mothers, daughters, sisters and more, one after another, beaten, raped, trafficked, but they don't get the resources they are entitled to because this police department obstructs it. 21st century policing is supposed to mean, among many other things, not turning our backs on certain victims of certain crimes. It means, among other things, just filling out the form. Please.
Is that it?
Yes, sir.
Would you like to answer, Chief?
Perfect.
Chief, would you like to address that?
Absolutely. I received an email earlier today, uh, from Mr. Fisher and, uh, I'm going to look into that and understand it, um, and, uh, ensure that we're complying with the appropriate victim compensation and, uh, crime victim reporting and, uh, notification. I think it's, uh, known, uh, by many in, on, on the council that domestic violence and intimate partner violence has been an, an issue and a priority of mine throughout my career. Uh, and so I, uh, look forward to, to reply to Mr. Fisher offline and then informing you of the results.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Sahana Kumar, followed by Rashab Raj.
Hi, hello. My name is Sahana and I'm a student in Pleasanton. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity for, to me for speak tonight. Today I will be addressing the first pillar of the 21st century policing report, building trust and legitimacy. Of the nine recommendations listed in the first pillar, three main topics are represented: community outreach and trust, understanding diversity and transparency. First, I'd like to talk to, uh, community outreach and trust. The ultimate goal should be to ensure that the department is reflective of Pleasanton's population, but that cannot be achieved until our cops understand the point of view of every Pleasantonian by attending events, having conversations and simply trying to step in other shoes. Being a student in Pleasanton schools, if I ever saw a police officer on campus, the first thoughts I felt were of fear and danger regardless of the officer's true motives. I felt as though any efforts for students to converse with cops were impossible, thereby only contributing to the untrustworthy atmosphere. Being raised in this community, I never truly thought of the police as everyday citizens, but of people who had power over me. I hope we can all agree that it would be to the betterment of all if Pleasanton had a casual human dynamic between our officers and citizens. Thankfully, this is a problem with many simple solutions. The report outlines several examples of police officers being a part of everyday community activities, thus removing the high hat stigmas we see today. For example, the city in Southern California implemented a program where police officers would coach pickup football games with students, which helped break down the stigma and helped at-risk teens build a better relationship with the law. These same laws can be implemented in Pleasanton, like having a booth in the downtown farmer's market, hosting a barbecue, or just going to different community centers and hearing our stories. This exact same idea applies to people of color and the overall reach of diversity in Pleasanton. For example, having even more talks with minority groups, making sure that we can have our cops report that they've talked to a majority of the cop-to-citizen ratio. This point brings up another issue of pillar one, diversity in the police or for, uh, police force. Action item 1.8.1 states that the federal government should create a law enforcement diversity initiative designed to help communities diversify law enforcement departments to reflect the demographics of the community. Despite it being an unimplemented federal law, the city of Pleasanton should still actively attempt to hire more and more people that represent all of Pleasanton's demographics. Sadly, I was unable to find any statistics on the PPD's diversity, which brings me to my last point, transparency both in and out of the department. Recommendation 1.4 states that law enforcement agencies should promote legitimacy internally within the organization by applying the principles of procedural justice. As of 2016, the most we'd heard about its implementation was that it was planned to happen and the public hasn't heard much of it since. By having just a system in which police officers themselves feel their voices are heard by becoming involved in policy decision, it will be even much easier for people to do the same with citizens. The report also elaborates on having surveys on the public's trust and opinions on new policies, which also clearly showcases statistics that prove that the efficiency of the department exists. All in all, I highly recommend you look into the policies that should have been implemented years past while looking to the future to see what's all we can do left. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Rashab Raj, followed by Carolyn Gung.
Uh, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Uh, good evening. My name is Rashab Raj and I will focus on the second pillar of 21st century policing. Although there is plenty I would like to talk about with this pillar, I will only discuss recommendation 2.8, which states that communities should determine some level of civilian oversight over their police departments to build accountability. The 2016 PPD implementation report correctly noted that the, that the recommendation does not push for a one-size-fits-all policy of oversight, but it then claimed that for Pleasanton, the city manager can fulfill this recommendation for civilian oversight all by himself. Other members of our council have expressed a similar view, that the council serves as our civilian oversight commission and that there is no need for a separate one. The 2020 status update report upheld essentially the same view and did not suggest any more steps were needed for this recommendation, despite saying that the recommendation was only partially implemented. The conclusions made by the city on this recommendation are unfortunately deeply flawed. Our current model of civilian oversight completely ignores the plain definition of the phrase. It neither represents ordinary civilians nor does it adequately oversee the police. Pleasanton's demographics have changed significantly in the past decade and our council and city manager have not changed enough to adequately represent our entire community of ordinary civilians. On top of this, many of our council members have working relationships with the police. Some have even been endorsed by the PPD's police union in their campaigns. It makes no sense to have an oversight commission that is involved and is potentially biased in favor of the police. Truly effective oversight requires those who oversee to be independent from those they are overseeing. By that requirement alone, our city council and city manager cannot oversee the PPD. Furthermore, our council and city manager have far too much on their plate to also be expected to adequately oversee an entire police department. Having either a separate commission or an independent police auditor could easily resolve these issues and fully implement this recommendation. A separate oversight body would relieve our council and city manager of this burden and allow them to focus on other issues. An independent police auditor would have far more expertise in overseeing the police than the council and a separate oversight commission would also be far more representative of the community's views in overseeing the police. I'm not necessarily advocating for one model over the other, but I suggest that our city research more into both because either one would be far better than the status quo or the suggested chief's advisory board, which has no real oversight authority. Keep in mind that this is just one out of the many recommendations in this report that the PPD has not adequately implemented. I urge this council to both reject the status update report and call for a more, a more comprehensive one with more of these recommendations fully implemented and call for an actually effective civilian oversight model, not just the chief's advisory board. It's been five years since the 21st century policing report was published. I hope it doesn't take another five years to finally see it be fully implemented. I yield my time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Carolyn Gung, followed by Erin Guera.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Uh, good evening. My name is Carolyn Gung. As part of our continuation of the discussion on the 21st century policing report, tonight I'll be addressing pillar three, technology and social media. Specifically, I want us to focus on recommendation three, which asks for community collaboration in developing public policy based on technology. I recognize previous efforts at community collaboration in developing technology standards. Our city has shied away from community evaluation once these policies go into effect. According to the PPD's advancing 21st century policing 2020 status update, from 2013 to 2018, the PPD worked with, quote, "Pleasant community members, businesses, educators and city employees to explore new organizational technologies such as crime mapping, automated license plate readers and predictive policing software." In 2017, pursuant to the 21st century reports, the PPD formed an agency-wide technology community, but three years later, community feedback is no longer actively sought and valued. Although long overdue, there are a few propositions I hope you consider. Similar to the council advisory boards, please release information about the 2013 work group's strategic plan and form a similar short-term community task force to gather community input on technology. Currently, the PPD actively posts signs Instagram, Facebook, Nextdoor and Twitter, usually with incident updates and community events. With little to no information released on the 2013 work group, it's difficult for me to envision how similar this task force will be, but accurately surveying and discussing our community's technology habits, it is valuable in tailoring content in the long term. Second, please create an official forum designed for anonymous community feedback on technology and distribute it as broadly as possible. While the city of Pleasanton website provides a citizen's complaint and form for police misconduct in general, it only exists as a physical form and there is no way to give feedback on PPD's information of technology officially. In addition, models such as predictive policing are created with the best intentions, but as studies on the national compass model have shown, flag minority defendants at a disproportionate rate compared to their white counterparts. To receive valuable and honest feedback on such technologies isn't a waste of effort. It will help us identify which models need improvement or replacement. So I strongly ask you to create concrete, specific agendas for the full implementation of recommendation three and its action items within pillar three. Your technology and social media are directed at the Pleasanton community. The community should be the ones who are able to provide the most input on these matters. Thank you. Happy Mid-Autumn Festival.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Erin Guera, followed by Robin Huang.
Hello. My name is Erin Guera and I'm a graduate of Foothill High. On pillar four of the president's task force, PPD has three large, two large flaws where they state they have implemented a program that they have not implemented or have only partially or improperly implemented. Item 4.3.2 states that communities should look to involve peer support counselors as part of multidisciplinary teams inappropriate. In the paragraph describing why, the 2016 report explains the need for these peer support counselors to work for the public and to respond to service calls alongside or instead of officers. So I am truly confused why Pleasanton Police has addressed this point by describing their own in-house support system for officers. In both the 2016 and 2020 update, the in-house system meant for officers is described instead of a program involving trained mental health professionals to serve the community. May I remind you that this is the type of system that has been recommended to you by the community multiple times. I have to assume that this is a huge misunderstanding on the part of the department, but item 4.3.2 is clearly not being properly considered. Item 4.5.3 states that law enforcement agencies should establish formal community or citizen advisory committees to assist in developing crime prevention strategies and agent policies as well to provide input on policing issues. I am disappointed that the 2020 update lists this as fully implemented when the discussion between PPD staff and council is clearly not complete. About those advisory boards, I believe there would be a strong addition to create a better police environment. I strongly recommend the council consider adopting a police advisory committee similar to Pleasanton's other committees. If the council can manage a committee on bikes and trails, you should have one on police. Staff recommended a specific type called a chief's advisory board made up of a diverse group of community members that have some level of meaningful power over policy, which I urge you to adopt as soon as possible. I support the staff's recommendation that this committee has no powers of investigation or oversight, but works on creating community-based police policy, as long as that is in addition to a separate independent oversight committee over police conduct, like Rashab mentioned, under pillar two. I'm disappointed in the way that PPD has seemingly tried to shirk their duties and I would be even more disappointed if the council continues to let them. The time is now for mental health services and community oversight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Robin Huang, followed by Emma Ready.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Um, I first just want to thank the council and Chief Sweng for all of your work these last few months and I especially want to share my appreciation for the new website as an essential step, uh, for transparency. So tonight I want to talk about the implementation of pillar five of the 21st century policing report. Um, I'm very glad to see that Pleasanton has partially adopted recommendation 5.2, which asks law enforcement to engage community members in the training process. As such engagement ideas continue, I hope that our police department continues expanding its outreach to groups like the families of mentally ill residents as well as communities of color. Also, for action item 5.9.1, I'm glad to see that our department has cultural diversity training through post. But cultural diversity cannot be reduced to training for occasional visits to the MCC. It has to be an ongoing conversation because for communities of color, it is daily. Related to this conversation is empathy. Recommendation 5.6 is marked as not applicable because it refers to post, not local agencies, but I think the central idea is relevant to Pleasanton. The original report highlights empathy training through interaction between police officers and mentally ill individuals. I hope this engagement occurs locally as well. It's one thing to be told about mental illness, but it's another thing to connect with mentally ill people to realize that they are human beings who need some time, patience and understanding. If this engagement has already started, I think the city should track such outreach as an important performance goal and publish information how effectively this is being done, how effectively this is being done. After all, if resident who is with a mentally ill family member is too afraid to call 911 out of fear of tragedy, then improvements to response time won't do any good. A last point, I have previously heard comments trying to dis- many young people who have been, uh, speaking and I hope this council notices the fact that the vast majority of young people speaking are residents of color and that is no coincidence. Some of our family members do not feel comfortable asking critical questions in a public forum. When you grow up hearing officials say that you should go back to where you came from, if you see your family members take longer to get through airport security because of their brown skin and hijab, you learn to say nothing and accept that there's nothing you can do to influence the authorities. For residents whose friends and family members suffer from mental illness, including people I cherish as brothers and sisters, they are afraid to ask critical questions because they don't want to leave our mentally ill loved ones vulnerable to being labeled as psycho criminals or have our representatives' response to the potential for seeing our loved ones dying in a horrifying body camera footage potentially be, there's just not much more we can do. In light of this, I hope that our department can go above and beyond the 21st century policing report to take initiative in building empathy for communities of color and residents suffering from mental illness. I truly believe that Pleasanton can be a role model for having effective and compassionate policing with hard work and support from this council. Thank you so much. I truly believe that Pleasanton can be a role model for having effective and compassionate policing with hard work and support from this council. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Emma Ready, followed by Randy Brown.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, hello, my name is Emma, and tonight I'd like to talk about the sixth and final pillar of the 21st century policing report, officer safety and wellness. I'm specifically going to discuss implementing recommendation 6.7. While this stated that Congress should develop peer review error management legislation, I suggest that Pleasanton implement this locally as well. To provide much-needed support for officers. I currently recognize the use of the peer support program as outlined in section 1011 of the PPD's policy manual. However, while this program admirably provides mental health support to officers, it is simply not enough, and this council should consider the following options. Number one, we should become a participating agency in the law enforcement officers or LEO near miss program. This program encourages law enforcement personnel to anonymously share their near miss stories. Which refer to when an officer could have been seriously injured or kills, and also their lessons learned. These experiences and their lessons could prevent fellow officers from being injured or killed in similar situations. And one benefit of this program is that it does not require a lot of effort on the PPD's part. As it is already established and funded by the community-oriented policing service offices at the Department of Justice. Additionally, if we encourage our officers to use this system, they can help inform others about the scenarios they've encountered on the job and gain valuable knowledge from their peers at the same time. Number two, in that vein, Pleasanton could also establish its own citywide peer review error management hotline. For officers to receive advice on their actions anonymously. If it were citywide, then we can manage, monitor and take control, take note of the subjects of these calls. Such as an officer's experience with handling 5150s. This would allow us to understand where our officers are burdened most and may fall short. Where their training is inadequate, and where we expect too much of them. This information would be extremely helpful in deciding whether to reallocate the responsibilities of the police to different departments in the city. Such as social workers or mental health professionals. You should all want Pleasanton to lead, to lead other cities and inspire them to do the same. Don't wait until the county, state, or country continue to implement such reforms. Act now and act as a role model. Is why so many speak highly of Eugene, Oregon, the city that piloted the Kahoots Mental Health Response Program. We as a city can help expand Leo near miss and encourage other cities to create advice hotlines for peer review error management as well. Additionally, I find it concerning that some council members and the city manager responded to questions about surveillance with laughter tonight. Especially since stingray technology has been slowly increasing in use by the police departments across the country, according to the ACLU. But ultimately, the actions that you take as a council could save lives. And if three of you don't even care about saving your residents' lives during this pandemic with a mask mandate. Then maybe you can care a little bit more about your precious lives in blue. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Randy Brown, followed by Adriana Santos.
Mayor Thorne and council members and staff, thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. My name is Randy Brown, and I would like to speak on behalf of our community's safety. First and foremost, I fully support our police department and our officers. I believe the relationship that our officers have with our residents is something to be admired by all communities. This is something we must always strive to preserve. As we look to the future of our department, I support our police department's budget and the creation of an advocacy advisory panel. As recommended by staff. I believe Chief Swing deserves the opportunity to lead with our support and our confidence behind him. Any additional oversight is highly unnecessary. Pleasanton is not an urban community and does not need the same type of bureaucracy that other cities require. Furthermore, it has been clearly shown over the past months that community input through our existing public process is encouraged and effective. Continued conversation will be facilitated by the biannual reports from Chief Swing. And I am confident these conversations will only enhance the excellent service already provided by the PPD. It is imperative for everyone's safety, officers and residents alike, that a process is in place for mental health calls. I support the model of having a nonprofit clinician on call to assist a plainclothed officer. Calls from non-neurotypical residents. My hope is that our community and our police department will continue to work closely together to ensure the safety of our residents and businesses. The security of our community should be the sole motivation for all the decisions being made here in this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Adriana Santos, followed by Brandon Pace.
Mayor Thorne, Adriana Santos is not in the room.
Okay, we'll move on then.
Okay, we've got Brandon Pace, followed by Jill Miller.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for taking a moment to, to listen to me and to other community members. I think that the approach this city council has taken is reflective of the thoughtful approach it takes in listening to all its community members over time. And it's frankly, in the fine tradition of this city. My family has been in this community for three generations. We've seen it come from a very small town into a, into a much larger community. I'm raising my own children here. And, you know, I've had the privilege of interacting with many police members over time, as have my children. We have personal experience with mentally ill people within our family, having had interactions with the, with the police force. And we've also had personal family interactions as members of the minority community with members of my family that have also had interactions with police force over time. Simply said that the experiences that we have in Pleasanton are not consistent with what's happening in other communities. And so pulling a script off the internet to read to you about what's happening in other cities and other things that should be done, isn't the appropriate remedy here. The appropriate remedy here is to consider appropriately what's going on with this community over time and what's been done. If we look at that carefully, what you can see is this community has dramatically changed in three generations. We have a much more diverse community. We have high respect amongst individuals. Even if we look at this, this commission, the city council or the other commissions, there is plenty of diverse views amongst this group. As anyone with experience in those, in these groups or councils or meetings would show. And they all show that not with, we have diverse groups, but we can still get to resolutions that are appropriate for our community. That the, a dramatic change in the way we're operating as a police force with the fine men and women that serve on our behalf is, is inappropriate. We don't need the things that work for large cities in our community. We need things that are appropriate for our community. There have been a number of recommendations that have gone through tonight that are appropriate in this regard. We have, we don't need an independent, unaccountable commission to be running the, or providing some kind of feedback or oversight to the police force. I've been in communities where that's the case. I don't, I don't believe it's effective, and that's through personal experience. What I would offer in exchange is holding politically accountable people such as yourselves. To be holding the police accountable is the way to have direct interaction between community and between the police force. No, no organization, no person is perfect. And so I applaud the efforts by the city council and by the police force to improve what they do over time. It's tragic to hear the experiences that others, even that have happened on this call that were discussed in other places where things don't go right. But that doesn't mean we need to make wholesale change and take community enforcement, community police enforcement away from this community and its members. Thank you for your dedication and your experience and your support to my family and this community.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Jill Miller, followed by Valerie Arkin.
Hi, thank you very much for allowing me to speak. I just want to say with respect to pillar one, I appreciate everything the police department has done of late to listen to the community. I've seen their increased social media presence, and I've seen them at the farmer's market, and I definitely think they're doing work to build legitimacy and trust with the community. So thank you for that. However, I do think their plan for pillar four, community policing falls short as, as is proposed with the police advisory board. I agree with Rashad and Erin that an independent advisory board is needed. The reason I think this is the case is because of a story I told last time about a friend of mine. A woman who was pulled over by a police officer who essentially wanted her phone number, but he wouldn't give her a ticket. He just sat there and made her talk to her, and she was powerless. He had the power, he had the badge, she couldn't leave. If she had felt comfortable enough to talk to the police department about it, she would have. If she felt like she could have trusted city council or the city manager to handle the situation, she would have done so. But because of this, she did not feel trusted or respected in that situation. She didn't feel trusted or respected by other people within the community, which is why, within the city, excuse me. Which is why we needed independent organization with auditors with a background in law enforcement. Along with community members to be receptive and open and a transparent organization. For people who aren't aligned or don't feel represented or comfortable speaking directly to the city can express their concerns. I, and that's just it. I just, we can do better. It's not another layer of bureaucracy. It's being transparent. It's continuing to build the trust. And it's planning for the future, and I think we can do better. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
The next speaker is Valerie Arkin, followed by Ayush Singh.
Good evening, mayor, city council, city staff, and community. I'm Valerie Arkin. I'm a current school board member and a candidate for city council, but I'm speaking tonight as a resident of Pleasanton. Thank you for having the public discussion on this item. I appreciate all the city's efforts with the communication and transparency on this important issue. A few comments and questions I'd like to address. I'd like to see the process outlined for the oversight by the city council. What will that look like? How often will it occur? I agree that the city council should have that oversight, so it would nice to see what, it would be nice to see what the process would look like. I'd also like to know if regular review of police policies will be done and what that would look like. I've mentioned it in previous meetings, that there are more policies that should be evaluated and possibly modified. And policies, and actually that means all policies, all city policies, not just police, should have a process outline for evaluating them on a regular basis. On 1.2, on the 1.2 recommendation, there is a statement that says that the city stands up to blatant acts of racism. I really think that word shouldn't be used in there. I think we should stand up to all acts of racism. So I think choosing our words carefully means something there. Under 1.5.4, that's under the physical control with equipment and techniques and the additional restrictions for certain individuals. I would like to see those experiencing a mental health crisis included in that. Under 4.3.1, I strongly advocate for the adding of mental health professionals to be included in responding to crisis situations. So thank you for including that in the recommendation. Under 4.6.8, the evaluation of SROs and DARE, the city and school district do need to work together to look at the data, evaluate the effectiveness. And seek feedback and input from stakeholders to see if modifications to these programs are needed. And finally, regarding the oversight component, I would advocate for both the police chief's advisory board and the independent police auditor. The advisory board should have a very broad cross-section of the community. That, I think it was mentioned, including the school district, the chamber, but also groups, all diverse groups. The senior community, the faith-based community, and many others, and it should be a very diverse group. That I think is a great avenue for having community engagement on this subject. The independent police auditor is another way, great way to add another layer of independent oversight. And I think that would be very much needed, and I'd highly recommend you consider adopting both of those components. Thank you again for continuing the conversation on this issue, and I look forward to seeing the implementation of ways that we can keep us all safe. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you. Next speaker.
The next speaker is Ayush Singh, followed by Jocelyn Combs.
Hi, my name is Ayush Singh, and I'm a registered voter in this city. I called to speak today on pillar one of the 21st century policing report. Cultivating a culture of transparency and accountability to build a public trust and legitimacy. But first, to our police department's credit, a new police website has been launched, and our officers have genuinely sought to build strong ties to the community. This does not go unnoticed. All of us in this city sincerely appreciate the work our police officers do. Our city too has done much work to address its concerns, holding listening sessions like publishing yearly reports on the police department. I recognize all of this work again, and I'm grateful to live in a city responsive to its citizens. The main reason I called it today, however, was because of those annual reports. In my opinion, they literally leave a few helpful statistics out. Now, the most recent annual report did, does list the percentage of calls that result in force being used, the types of force being used. And resuscayed when force is used. But there are a few metrics I would like to see in the report. Namely, a breakdown of how many times force was used by race, age, and gender. This kind of thorough reporting can be done. San Francisco County, with a much larger population than Pleasanton, uses these statistics when releasing its force data. And reporting on use of force with this level of detail is beneficial to both the police and the community. It helps us in the community get a better look at what police officers do and creates accountability for the department. Again, I'm very thankful for all the work the city council and police department has put in to make sure its citizens feel heard. I just think it can go a little bit further. And one final point, our city is very proud of its small-town character, as it should be, but this can't just be a saying. It should be an opportunity to build trust within our community. Pleasanton is a city of families, and in Pleasanton schools, I've been taught the value of honesty, the value of facts, the value of statistics. I don't think it's asking too much to ask our police to do the same. Our police do a great job, but they can go, again, just a little bit further. I appreciate the productive tone Chief Swing has taken throughout this meeting, as well as in the past few months. And I'm just hoping again that we can continue to work in order to make the idea and the concept of 21st century policing a reality here in Pleasanton. And make sure that, and make sure that Pleasanton is a role model for, is a role model for all cities. Thank you again.
Thank you. Next speaker.
The next speaker is Jocelyn Combs, followed by John Bauer.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for taking my call. First thing I want to say is wow. I am thoroughly impressed with the staff report and the work the police department and the whole city staff has done on this. I'd learned more in one day, well, plus the time I spent reading all of this, than in my 40 years here. It's just excellent. A couple of things. Recommendation 1.5.2 is residency incentive program. It's the only one in the whole report that is listed not considering. And I think this is a huge opportunity, could be a huge opportunity for us. My experience is that when staff, city staff. Education staff, police, live in the city where they work, that there is much more buy-in because what they do affects them directly. We've talked about affordable housing in the city for these workers. Let's look at an incentive program. Let's look at some money toward a down payment. Let's look at some way to mesh these with all of our hard workers in the city who work for these departments. Second thing is recommendation 2.11 talks about business cards. We only give business cards when asked. And I think we might want to look at modifying that to say business cards when appropriate. Because with all the new information we have on our website, the text to 911, we have lots of information we can give people. In a business card, in addition to the officer's name or whatever. And I think that's a human interaction that we do in business all the time. And it's a community trust action, and I think we can look at that. And next for the advisory board. I think if you choose to have an advisory board, I think the first thing that they should look at is reviewing the 21st century recommendations and next steps on a regular basis. Point out that Walnut Creek's advisory board meets monthly, Palo Alto meets every two months, and Santa Clara meets every three months. So there are options there. I also support the police auditor. You don't have to hire a person. You can work with a firm. But it gives some oversight and gives the city manager frankly, some backup when he's the one making this decision with the police chief. There are different kinds of auditors that city uses, and in fact, the city of Palo Alto has both an auditor and an advisory board. So there's a precedent out there. You might want to talk to them. Please don't, from my experience working in a city that had a police commission. It may not be the same. It was a much larger city, which the chief pointed out. They can take a life of their own, and I don't think that's the right move for Pleasanton right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
The next speaker is John Bauer, followed by Nicholas Albert.
My name is John Bauer, and the Pleasanton Police killed my son on August 1st, 2018. Shannon Astle was killed in 2017, and John Demming Jr. was killed in 2015. All were in a state of mental crisis. Three unnecessary deaths in four years. By comparison, Berkeley's last death at the hands of police was in 2012. So for those who do not think that we have a problem with the PPD, I encourage you to a problem with the PPD, I encourage you to take your head out of the sand. We do have a problem here in Pleasanton. The use of force and the specific type used has been included in the PPD annual report from 2016. In 2016, there was a total of 16 use of force, one of that, one taser strike. In 27, 2017, there was 25 use of force, zero taser strikes. In 2018, there was 31 use of force incidents with nine taser strikes. In 2019, there was 37 use of force incidents with one taser strike. The trend is moving in the wrong direction. Why in three years has the use of force more than doubled? That's a question. And why in 2018 were there nine taser strikes? So use of force, needless to say, is a rarity. With the use of force being so rare, I question how prepared each PPD member is to properly deal with a situation which require, which requires force. While I'm generally pleased with the presentations provided by staff, however, I feel that substantive changes are not being made. There is another definition of procedural justice as it relates to communication. And that's what I feel we've been got, that we've been going through these last four months. This is evidenced by the next city council meeting, which has a request to approve a contract for body cams and tasers. Body cams should be approved, but until the city council fully understands why tasers were used 11 times in the last four years, and especially why in 2018 had nine taser strikes compared to zero or one in the other years. And finally, and this is not a joke, before approving tasers, each city council member should be tased for them to get a firsthand experience of what it is like to be tased. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
The next speaker is Nicholas Albert, followed by Ward Kanowski.
And Mr. Bauer, I'm sorry for your family's loss. And would it be appropriate for the chief to respond to some of those questions?
For you there.
Yes, I'm here.
Were any of those questions anything that you feel that you can respond to?
Without having, excuse me, an opportunity to do a deeper dive into our use of force information, I don't feel comfortable responding to those questions at this time.
All right. Can we ask you to respond in the future? To review those, what was said, and bring us a response?
I will send a response through the city manager's office to the council.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Greetings. My name is Nicholas Albert, and I'm the president of the Pleasanton Police Officers Association. As you may know, the PPOA represents the men and women who comprise the majority of the Pleasanton Police Department. As law enforcement faces many challenges ahead, it remains our goal to maintain a high level of professional and compassionate service. The PPOA is committed to partnering with our community and city leaders to keep Pleasanton a safe place to live, work, and raise a family. As our members are always open to constructive dialogue and establishing mutual goals with the community, it is the position of the PPOA that overseeing the police department is the shared responsibility of city council, the city manager, the police chief, and his administrative staff. The Pleasanton Police Department has a high standard of accountability, and the PPOA is confident in the existing city structure. When we board an airplane, we don't tell the pilot how to fly. We expect the professional to get us there safely. Have the members of the Pleasant Police Department not done this? On March 3, 2020, I stood before each of you at council as you unanimously approved tentative agreement on a new labor contract, a contract in which we mutually agreed to mandate additional training on topics such as homeless outreach, mental health, and implicit bias, well before any national calls for reform. During this meeting, each member of council praised the men and women of this organization, citing our exemplary levels of service, professionalism, and countless positive interactions with the community. Yet here we sit. So I ask you, what problem are we trying to solve? What has a single member of my organization done to draw your concern? Or are we simply making changes at the demands of those who have never taken an oath nor put on the uniform? Oakland, San Francisco, Los Angeles, Sacramento, Richmond, on a broader scale, Portland, Minneapolis, Seattle. Each of these communities have had models of civilian oversight for years. Yet they do not provide the level of service and care that this community has come to expect. Surely, these are not the cities in which Pleasanton residents wish to model our city after. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Ward Kanowski, followed by Krista Blasick.
Sorry, I just muted myself. Yeah, this is Ward Kanowski, 26-year resident of Pleasanton, raised my three kids here. All graduated from Foothill High. And I'll make my comments brief since there's already been a lot of discussion around civilian oversight. I would just urge Chief Swing and everyone on the council to please take a look at the 13 principles of effective oversight from the National Association of Civilian Oversight of Law Enforcement, particularly the principles around independence and clearly defined and adequate jurisdiction and authority. The principle regarding independence does note that one of the most important and defining concepts of, concepts of civilian oversight of law enforcement is independence. It refers to an absence of real or perceived influence from law enforcement. And then with regards to adequate jurisdiction and authority, having adequate jurisdiction and authority is fundamental in achieving organizational goals. So whether the model that is ultimately chosen is a commission, an IPA, or a advisory board, those first two principles are paramount. If they're not properly implemented in whichever model is chosen, then the, the body that is put in place, or the auditor, or whichever it may be, is not going to be effective. So please, I do encourage you to take a look at the principles put out by that organization. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Our next speaker is Krista Blasick, followed by Rachel Weisong.
Mayor Thorne, Krista Blasick is not in the room.
Okay, move on, please.
Okay, we have Rachel Weisong, followed by Tony Sobey.
Hello, good evening. I want to commend everyone who has worked hard on this. And I really wanted to point out that the piece about the police force being guardians, I remember hearing that in another call, that the police officers in the community should be guardians, not warriors. And that stuck out to me as maybe something that we have fallen away from. I like the renewed approach towards that. These are our tax dollars at work. And the citizens of Pleasanton should have a say in, in making sure that they are the guardians rather than the warriors. There was an earlier comment that mentioned being afraid of police officers. I would echo that. In my life, often, a police officer makes, makes me feel equal parts fear and, and, you know, hope that nothing is wrong. I'm worried that I have done something wrong. I think that it's an important approach to take that, that they are our guardians in the community. I also want to say that there are a lot of, a lot of efforts being made. But as many people in America are learning, have learned this summer or over the last two years, there is a, a deep component of racism in our country. And the anti-racist work is an ongoing process. There cannot be a single outreach to a certain community, whether it's the Jewish community or the Muslim community. And then that solves it. It is an ongoing process where we have to learn from each other and actually live inside of each other's communities and work together. And I think the police force needs to lead the charge on that. We are a small community. We are not a big urban center with a type of crime that is prevalent in larger cities. And I think that means that our police force can focus on things like making sure that they are truly being anti-racist, not just attending a single diversity training, but that we are making sure the police force is also diverse, and that we understand what the work of anti-racism is to root that, root that out. I remember when these calls first started, reading an article, I believe published in the Pleasanton Weekly, about an incident where a black woman who was an Amazon delivery driver was, the cops or the police were called on her for delivering a package because someone in Pleasanton thought that maybe she was stealing or unclear, but called the police. And the police comment in the, in the newspaper was that, what do you expect? This is Pleasanton. And I think, I find that, I find that heinous, that it is expected, perhaps, that Pleasanton residents would be racist, that that was a, that was a normal occurrence. And I hope that our police force could work to rid that kind of racism from our community by showing by example, and to perhaps apprehend people who are incorrectly calling the police on our people of color in our community who are doing the essential work to keep us all happy here, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Our next speaker is Tony Sobey, followed by Wallace Mayer.
Mayor Thorne, Tony Sobey is not in the room.
Okay, go on to Wally.
Wallace will be followed by John Sensaba.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Well, I happen to believe that our police department is a role model for other departments. After the chief's report, it really stood out that they think that they're on the leading edge of policing. They've done things, starting in 15, that now other departments are just beginning to implement. They've done a good job of protecting our citizens. And that's their main job, which seems to sometimes get lost in the process. I believe that our police will work hard to keep us in that role model position. And the last thing we need is to hire another consultant or consulting firm to do the same thing that our police department is doing now. As for the chief advisory board, it should be reflective of our community as a whole. And I want to thank you as council members, and especially the police, for doing their job. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is John Sensaba, followed by Jeffrey Zofarelli.
Good evening. I understand the anxiety caused by recent events in our country. I also understand the need to attempt to exert some form of control in order to feel more personal safety and to lessen the feelings of anxiety. Once we move past the amygdala-driven response to the stress caused by upsetting events, we need to revert back to our rational thought processes before taking action. We have professional city management, a professional police chief, and a highly qualified command staff in our police department. They have delivered excellent results for many years. They all ultimately report up to an oversight body elected by the citizens of Pleasanton, and that is you, our city council. Given this context, I have to ask, what problem are we trying to solve? If there's a genuine problem, let's hear it, well-defined, along with specific solutions. If the problem we are solving is something other than policing, let's admit that and focus on our efforts in solving that problem. It feels to me that we may be witnessing problems in agencies and other jurisdictions, and trying to solve them through local action with our own agency. While I believe these are well-intentioned concerns, we risk damaging a high-functioning organization if we employ unnecessary and untested methods. Taking away necessary tools and methods and imposing policies that are based on what feels good to non-professionals rather than what actually works will not only put our officers and our citizens at risk, it will cause expensive personnel turnover in our department. Those that can leave for other agencies will leave. We will be hard-pressed to recruit high-quality replacements once we earn the reputation as a community that doesn't support public safety. I urge you to take your time with these decisions. Be sure that you understand what problem you are solving, the options to solve that problem, and the long-term ancillary impacts of the decisions you make. Finally, good governance in any organization, especially in civic governance, is strategic rather than opportunistic or reactionary. I believe that some of the actions being considered tonight would be less strategic than we would like. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Jeffrey Zofarelli, followed by Linda Kelly.
Linda Kelly?
Are you hearing me now? Again, I'll repeat. Mayor Thorne, city council members, city manager Fiallo, and Chief Swing, thank you for your time. As a 42-year resident of Pleasanton, I'd like to share that in my 35 years in public safety career, I've had, through working associations with Pleasanton PD, as both a police officer through mutual aid activities, and incident commander with the fire department, always seen as a professional, well-trained, and assist organization that manage incident objectives and community policing to the highest level possible. Pleasanton is not a metro city, and therefore our problems are not those complex. Yes, we have issues, but we do not have the complexity of what many metro agencies people like to compare to. Our town cannot afford to defund, redirect, or diminish our police department in any way. Bolstering and assisting our officers with trained personnel, especially in the area of mental health, attached to the department can build a more cohesive team for addressing those incidences where intervention is started early on. This will require additional funding for such programs and for the personnel to provide these programs in execution. Experience has taught me that the 911 call is made when the situation has already escalated. This means that when these scenarios take place, we have to have a cohesive team of both the mental health providers and the police department working in conjunction with each other to de-escalate the situation. I urge you again not to diminish, eliminate, or channel the police budget in any fashion. I encourage you to bolster it. I encourage you to use the models already cited to bring in those individuals that can help our police officers, help our community, and help our citizens, just as you have for the last 42-plus years that I've been a resident in making Pleasanton an upstanding town to live in. Look for grants, look for funding, establish a solid joint task force, not civil interference, but civil input and cooperation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
The next speaker is Linda Kelly, followed by Nancy Allen.
It's your turn, Linda.
Mayor and councilman Chief Swing, I'd like to thank you for the remarkable last few weeks of giving us insight into how our city works and how all the pieces of the puzzle fit together to create a presentation for all of the citizens to help us understand what is indeed going on in our community, and particularly, in this case, the police department. The report tonight was remarkable. It was thorough. It was well-thought-out. Saff was involved. City manager Fiallo was involved, the five members of the council, and the 80, however, many of the police department. That's a lot of energy produced to create a feeling of trust with the community and a transparency with the community. I commend all of you for your efforts and would hope that perhaps the younger members of the community can understand more carefully that it isn't in the four corners of the document. It is in the interactions between city staff, city council, police department, and those of us out here who live day in and day out in this lovely place we call home of Pleasanton. I thank you all, and carry on your great work.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Our next speaker is Nancy Allen, followed by Mike Capilla.
Hello there. I'm Nancy Allen. I'm a planning commissioner and a candidate for the city council. Tonight, I'm speaking for myself as a longtime resident. Wow. I was impressed with the rigor and thoughtfulness of these recommendations. I also appreciate the new information the police department has posted on our website. It was excellent. I value our PD and agree with the recommended changes with a couple food for thought. First, on item 1.3.2, which has to do with identifying a dedicated press information officer, I wasn't sure we need to fund a dedicated press officer. I would prefer that money be used instead for additional mental health support or other needs. Perhaps our existing city communication manager can help supplement this role, or we can contract and outsource information as needed for media support. And point two has to do with pillar two on oversight, which has been discussed a lot tonight. I fully support the advisory board for the police chief, but I think we may need to consider more as 21st century policing does emphasize an independent model of oversight. I do believe the city council is that independent oversight with regular reviews, but I think it may be helpful for the council to actually supplement that with an independent auditor to support their role and at a minimum provide evaluation of critical incidents that may occur. One of the top criteria for 21st century policing is to have some level of independence on reviews, and I believe this may provide that. I talked to the city leaders from the City of Davis today, and I've reviewed the website for Palo Alto that follow this model. What I learned is both cities use the same firm, and that City of Davis said it definitely helps to build trust. The independent auditor reports support the PD as much as they do the community, and they provide an independent perspective that can help heal tensions. In the case of Davis, they had less than a dozen incidents a year to review, and Palo Alto had much fewer. It's not an expensive process. It was well, it was, it could be $40,000 to $60,000 a year. It could be whatever we scope the job to be, and it would be in support of the city council. So in summary, I think our community, some members may not be satisfied unless on critical incidents, we can show this independent review, and I think considering this in a low-key way could be a win-win solution. Thank you for your excellent work in keeping our community safe and making the strategic decisions that continue to move us forward. Good night.
Good night. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Mike Capilla, followed by Jack Balch.
Mike, you got to unmute your phone.
Okay.
Or computer.
Good evening. I'm Mike Capilla. I'm a longtime Pleasanton resident and a local business owner. I support our police department. When I think of the things that make Pleasanton a wonderful community to live and raise a family in, I think of the scenic beauty, the idyllic, graphic location, that Pleasanton is a city of planned progress, has cultivated top-level schools and businesses in our community, and I think that we are very fortunate to live in a safe community with a low crime rate. The death of George Floyd and the graphic videos of his arrest was tragic, wrong, and internally troubling to many of us. I understand the desire to take steps to prevent something like this from happening again. However, this problem in the big city of Minneapolis is not a problem we are facing here in Pleasanton. The Pleasanton Police Department is a top-tier organization. I appreciate their efforts to routinely examine the community's needs, their own practices, policies, and actions, and effort to continually improve their own performance. Furthermore, they are a transparent organization that promotes an open dialogue with the community. We don't need a more complex framework to promote good communication with our police department because it already exists, and I believe strongly that Pleasanton, especially in this time of budget uncertainty, should not pursue the high cost of hiring an independent officer. The Pleasanton Police Department has not requested or indicated a need for this oversight and intervention. In closing, I'd like to thank our mayor Jerry Thorne and our city council for arranging this forum, which has allowed myself and others to share our support of our police department. I'd also like to welcome our outstanding new police chief, David Swing, who's been here at Pleasanton this year. Thank you, and your hard work is appreciated.
Thank you. Next speaker.
The next speaker is Jack Balch, followed by Mike Ferrari.
Hello, mayor and city council members. My name is Jack Balch, and I'm a City of Pleasanton Planning Commissioner, but the views expressed here are my own and not those of the commission. I'd like to begin by thanking you for your service. I'd also like to thank our Pleasanton Police Force for their continued work in the community through this conversation and process. I think we have all learned a lot. The 21st Century Policing Document is an excellent framework for police to improve upon their relationship with their communities. I'm extremely encouraged to see many elements implemented in process or planned by our professional law enforcement organization here in our community. During the conversations we've had, I've encouraged, and this one here, I encourage you to keep in mind that our crime rates are low and our use of force statistics lower. We have identified potential for improvements with an improved, more transparent website, body cameras, continued support and training of our officers, and mental health support as prior conversations have identified. I support our police applying the 21st Century Framework in the ways specific for Pleasanton and taking those actions that support public safety here in our community. I oppose and have voiced it before, any formation of a police commission. I strongly believe that any such body with such powers will immediately become politically based upon whom and how individuals are appointed to the commission, and we need to look no further than Oakland to understand the risk present now. To this end, our city council should be our oversight body. You are our elected leaders, and you are directly accountable to the people of this great community. The responsibility of oversight lies with you. I ask you not to dilute it further. As I've said at the prior meetings, we all must rise to the challenge of making public safety the best we can for our community, and I compliment our law enforcement agency for being a partner in doing that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Our final speaker of the night is Mike Ferrari.
I apologize for not having timed my presentation or coordinated it with others, but I would like to share a little information. In my profession, I work with police departments throughout the country. For the sake of time, I would pay particular attention to the comments of Mr. Sensaba, Mr. Zofarelli, and Ms. Kelly. They summarize my thoughts. But one overarching thing I think folks are forgetting is the report that is being quoted was to address problems nationwide. Yes, there are police departments that need major change. Pleasanton is not one of them. Concern over police community relations, Pleasanton had already enacted most of the recommendations in that report. Moreover, there's still, is a lot of misunderstanding or outright ignorance, whether deliberate or unintentional, on the subject. For example, most people are probably not aware that the saying, "Hands up, don't shoot," which was triggered by the rioting in Ferguson, was an absolute lie. The Obama Justice Department eventually confirmed what independent witnesses had said from day one, that Michael Brown, still being held up by some as some kind of martyr, was the aggressor who attacked a solo police officer before the officer even got out of his car. Brown never put his hands up or otherwise, tried to surrender. And I noted that few speakers provided examples of specific concerns about Pleasanton police. I can answer for the chief. The use of force by Pleasanton is shockingly low, and I mean shockingly low. I'm almost afraid that our officers are putting themselves at risk. So oversight, of course, as I understand it, the chief serves the pleasure of the council, that's pretty strong accountability if something goes wrong. That's why, as staff mentioned, other than large cities, very few cities have police commissions or independent auditors. There is that direct accountability. And as someone else said, San Francisco, Oakland, Los Angeles, Portland have had enhanced level of oversight for decades, and that makes it pretty clear that more bureaucracy is not a guaranteed solution. So, you know, in some, I would, I would say that there's an old saying that seems very appropriate here. Sometimes it is very important to go slow and get things right rather than fast and wrong. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I'll close the public hearing, bringing it back to council for action. We'll start with Councilmember Pitten.
Got it off mute. Thank you, mayor, and thank you to everyone who spoke tonight and in our previous meetings. We've had, it's been a great collaboration with our public here in Pleasanton, and it's amazing that we have such a variety of responses to the report and the recommendations, but that's, that's what a great cross-section of Pleasanton is, that we are able to listen to various voices and opinions and recommendations. And I think we have a good recommendation after reading this report and thoroughly vetting it. It's pretty amazing how many people have really sat down and read the 21st policing document, and I know I have many times. And I think it's absolutely imperative, and I think the police department has done a great job of strengthening the trust with the public, not just through the recent actions and being down at the farmer's market or the website or Facebook. I've been in this city for 30 years, and I participated in the third class of the Citizens' Police Academy 20 years ago, and I knew that outreach was there at that time, and they were, they were doing what is now considered standard, but they had it going 20 years ago, 20-plus years ago. I am concerned about the comment about victim forums, and I'm glad to hear the chief's response and what his history has been, and I'm confident he'll bring that back to us. And I, and I am conflicted between the amount of discussion over oversight versus advisory. And I personally am, think that we don't have an oversight problem with our police department. I think our police department is a sterling department, has done a great job, and that we have an oversight committee has been mentioned, and that's us. We're elected, and we can be unelected, and we, and our citizens have the right to decide who leads the city and who has the oversight over the police department. And I just don't think we're at that place. We're not like other cities. I won't, I won't use names. But I think it's really important to having our new chief have the opportunity to form an advisory board and be able to sit down and listen and share, and I think that's key, key, is being able to collaborate. Part of the conversation earlier tonight about whether people really like our police department as much, my feedback in this city is easily in the 90% of every, every text, email, phone call, interaction I've had on the street. And, and I can also say that on national night out, when we're able to have a national night out, we have almost 50 parties in this city, attended by hundreds, if not thousands of people, and that shows the support for our police department in this town. So I'm not, I'm not willing to undermine that. I'm looking forward to seeing the police department implement the recommendations that they've brought forth for the 21st Century Policing, and I'll make a motion. Actually, mayor, do we want to take this all in one motion, or do we want to bifurcate the two items? Do the 21st Century and do the citizens, the chief's advisory board?
Let's try it all in one, one way.
Could we please, could we please break it into two motions? Could we please break it into two motions?
Why?
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with making one motion, and if it's not satisfactory or supportive, then we can go forward with two. So I'll make a motion that we accept staff's recommendation to accept the department's advancing 21st Century Policing Status Update 2020 report, and I'll also make the motion to establish a police chief's advisory board to advise the chief on police matters of public safety, as well as a twice-a-year community policing and department update to the city council. And I'll, I'll leave the motion there to allow the chief and the city staff to bring back what that looks like, when it can be implemented, when the people and the different organizations can be chosen. I don't think we have that on the agenda tonight, so that's my motion.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Narum, are you out there? Vice Mayor Narum? She out there?
She's there. She's muted.
Maybe we should go on to another council member.
I'm running a meeting, Julie. She not out there? Councilmember Brown? She's what?
She is, but her, her, her status is muted, and I can't unmute it. I can only ask her to unmute.
Because you can't ask her anything then to ask her to unmute. Because she's on her phone.
Okay, Carla, why don't you go ahead?
Well, I'd really like to break this up, Jerry. I think they're two very different, different items. I can completely support the 21st Century, so I will offer a second for the 21st Century suggestions, but I'm just, maybe we can work through this just a little bit, because I do support the police chief and having a citizen advisory committee. I support that, but I think most residents that I've talked to have been very surprised. In eight years, I have never had any kind of oversight projects ever come to this council in eight years. And Jerry, have you, have you, and as a council member? That's what's missing, is that we haven't, and we need to implement one. And I just want to make sure and to be clear that, that your motion involves having a more involved city council.
Yeah, that's exactly what I said. It says in the recommendation that, as well as twice a year, per year, community policing and department updates to the city council, and the city council has the opportunity to increase that if the city council feels it's necessary. And we have had updates. There's an annual report by the police department. We've had the chief, the previous chief, Chief Spiller, bring this to our council. So it's, it's really not true that we haven't been updated in the past eight years. We certainly have been updated. So that's my motion, and I'll stay with the current motion that I made.
Julie, you've been receiving the same thing that all the public has received, and we have not waded into one single item in eight years on a citizen oversight, I mean, on a city council oversight. So that's what I want to make it really clear, that we will have one, it will be more interactive, and if it comes twice a year, and that's not often enough, then obviously it needs to happen more, and we need to have this council, if we're going to be held accountable. As the oversight to the police department, we actually need to be the oversight, not sit here in our chairs and be city council members and say we are when we've actually had zero events ever come to this council. So I want to just make it really clear, if I'm going to second the motion, that we haven't in the past, and we need to, because we're being asked to be the check and balance for our police department. We have an incredible police department, as we've heard over and over and over again. I completely support that, but with all, with all government, you have a check and balance system. We have a check and balance system, and it is called the citizens. They fire us if we don't do our job, and they hire us again if we do. But in this case, we have not, and I want to make sure that the public understands, I 100% support this council being the advisory for the police department, but we have to start doing it, and we need to start doing it. We should have started doing it eight years ago. I too am a proud graduate of the Citizen Police Academy from 2018, and we have incredible officers. I learned so much about our police department. I strongly endorse and support them, but we need a check and balance system. I raised my hand. I'm proud to be a part of that, but we just need to get it started, and it needs to be effective.
Jerry, isn't it implied in your motion that we're going to have Jerry, isn't it implied in your motion that we're going to have updates from the advisory board and the chief at least twice a year, and even more than that if we need to? Well, if you need to, probably not going to be around.
Yes, no, he did, and I agree with that. I just want to make it clear to the public, we haven't yet. So we have been in advisory board, but we have never had an item come to this council.
No, I think I know what you're saying, and what we've seen is the annual report from the police department. And I've read those reports, and they are quite detailed. But you're right, nothing has been brought in terms of an incident that has occurred to the city council.
And to your point, Mayor, so if, if we're looking for a citizen oversight, I don't think it should be the public documents that are the report. I'm looking for something more interactive and more, more, where we're actually in oversight, not just a recipient of public data.
Yeah, I agree. Kathy, are you on yet? She still not on?
She can't, she can't unmute her phone. So something's wrong, something's wrong with the system.
Julie?
Okay. I strongly support our Pleasanton Police Department. I have great respect and trust in our department. I, our officers, men and women, are good people who work hard and do a wonderful job for our community. I have never, I would never support anything that would put any of our officers at risk. I want them to have every bit of equipment to keep them safe, every bit of training that benefits them and our citizens. I would, no one on this council has ever made any indication of supporting defunding the police. There is a lot of fear mongering and misinformation that is being promoted in our community. This issue is not about an incident that happened somewhere else in the country. The concerns, while we have a wonderful police department, and we have outstanding officers, and a really great new chief. But we've had three critical incidents in four years in Pleasanton, on our streets, our citizens. We are not immune to the concerns. When Mr. Bauer speaks about his son, is it possible that the people who spoke after him hadn't heard him? Is it possible that the people who spoke have not watched and know that three people have been killed in Pleasanton? We're addressing real issues that affect Pleasanton. And having a wonderful police department doesn't mean that we shouldn't be diligent to make sure that another fatality doesn't happen. Not only has there not been in the last eight years, but I think city council, city manager Fiala had said that it was, how many years, 20-something years that he's been here? And there's never been any oversight, police oversight on the part of the city council. Not only has there been zero, but in fact, May 19th, when I asked that there just be a discussion of body cams and, and tasers and a contract that we were being asked to fund 1.3 million for, Councilmember Pitten wouldn't even agree to agendize a discussion. That he is now interested and so supportive of these discussions is only because of the social pressure and his campaign. To be, to expect that, that there will be a change where our council or any future council will really take on the responsibility of oversight is disingenuous. The best model to avoid the political maneuvering and maliciousness that has been going on is the independent auditor, because it is a law enforcement background agency that looks at things with a law enforcement perspective. Nowhere in the police chief's advisory board is any opportunity to, to look at citizen complaints. I have for years asked what oversight there is for citizen complaints. I've been on the city council for two years, and I've been asking, and I'm supposed to be the current oversight. I've been asking to see citizen complaints, and I've not been able to get them in two years. I, I, of course, can't support that motion. I would have liked the courtesy of having it broken up, so I could support the report that I think a tremendous amount of work and, and really good stuff went into this report. But I am going to ask, I think someone brought up something that, when I read the report, I'm embarrassed that it was bothering me, and, and I didn't deal with it. I, I, I just, I let it go. And the speaker is absolutely right that on 4.3.2, that was really bothering me. I think it was completely, I think that was Aaron Jacob. Thank you, Aaron, you're right. There is a mistake there. That should not, if there's going to be, if this passes, at least that, and 4.3.3 need to be set aside for correction. Several of the speakers, I wasn't able to keep up with them all, made other corrections that were legitimate and should be looked at, so I would at least ask that staff review those items that were mentioned and not consider the approval of this document without at least looking at those issues. I would ask that the, if we are reviewing and responding to the civilian, the, the 21st century policing document, it is very specific. Somebody said that there is nothing specific in this document. That's not true. It is very specific to say, "Some form of civilian oversight of law enforcement is important in order to strengthen trust with the community." That's very specific. Some form of civilian oversight. And the proposed police chief advisory board does not meet the criteria of independent oversight. I think it's a good thing. If, in addition, we had civilian oversight, because I think that the, the police chief advisory board is a nice contribution, addition to the many other really good things that our Pleasanton Police Department does. But it isn't independent civilian oversight. So I'll, I'll stop there.
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah, we have, Vice Mayor Narum has rejoined the meeting.
Okay. Vice Mayor Narum.
Okay, so, can you hear?
Yes.
Good. I don't know what happened. I couldn't get my phone to unmute. I was working on it. So I'm not 100%, I was in and out exactly what the motion was. Maybe if you could repeat that for me, I apologize, but...
Yeah. Yeah, I'll, Vice Mayor Narum, I made a motion that we accept the recommendations as, as put forth in the staff report, making sure to include the, that there would be a twice-a-year minimum, twice-a-year community policing and department update to the city council. And then there was a comment that I said that I look forward to the return from the chief of, about the, the victim forums that was brought up tonight, but the motion is a staff recommendation for the most part.
Okay. Well, I, you know, my comments are, I'm going to support that. I, I have not heard justification for a police commission, and in fact, I think we've had a number of speakers saying, "Don't do a police commission." And I'm, I'm not ready to also, to, to have a police auditor either. You know, we don't have Maltese. We're not Oakland. We're not San Francisco. We're not Richmond. And as one speaker said, you know, more bureaucracy, i.e. commissions and independent auditors, you know, doesn't, doesn't guarantee improvements, and you don't need to look no further than those cities. So in my opinion, I think that we need to be looking at, at cities that are similar to Pleasanton, such as Walnut Creek, Lafayette. And as Brandon Pace said, and I think somebody else said, "And whatever we decide to do, it needs to be appropriate for Pleasanton." I'm not willing at this point to, to politicize our police department, which was, is what would happen if we were to have a commission, because guess who's appointing them? Politicians. So we're all, you know, and if it's the mayor, then, you know, it's all, it's, it's just politicizing it. And I think our police department at this point deserves better. I am happy that I, I hear the chief committed, that the citizens advisory board would recommend, committed to having a represent, representative cross-section of the community. And I, I trust him, and quite frankly, if we don't have confidence in him to, to fulfill this, then I think, you know, we're, there's a different conversation here that we need to be having. I see this board as a, as a huge help to him in, in continuing to get him into the community and understand the community, given, you know, he's been on the job less than six months. And I, I just, I see some huge benefits for that. I, you know, I think it's important, the board is advisory to him. I think somebody made the suggestion perhaps of having some discussion of the review of some of the action steps in the 21st century document. I think that makes some sense. And I, you know, the reality is, the five of us are the, we, we are the oversight. We are the elected representatives of this city. And, you know, three of you have been on here for eight years. I'm at, I think, seven and a half. And, you know, we've never really brought forth and asked these questions. And so now, given the circumstances and stuff, I think it's appropriate for us to have the, the twice-a-year. And if we need more, so be it. We can always do it. I, you know, the other thing that I also think that we need to keep in front of this is that there are new pieces of legislation that are affecting law enforcement. I believe that there were three bills signed by the governor this week on law enforcement. And, you know, we need to keep track of that and how that's going to affect us, because it's going to supersede anything that we're talking about doing here. It's a little bit like all the discussion we had on banning flavored tobacco, and at the end of the day, Sacramento took care of it for us. And, you know, the other thing I think we have to remember here is that if this, if this advisory board isn't working or it's not accomplishing our goals, we have choices. We can reinvent it, we can disban it, we can restructure it. This is not something that we're locked into forever. It's, it's new, I think it's worth a try. And, and so I'm going to support the motions as, as have been stated. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll keep my comments very short. First of all, is, I think going beyond what's in this motion, and I do agree that we do need to hear more from our police department through this advisory board, and if it doesn't work, it won't work, and you can change it. But going beyond what's been recommended here or what's in the motion, I think it's kind of like having a solution, looking for a problem, because I don't know what we're trying to solve beyond that. So I'm going to support the motion and have to do a roll call vote.
Can we have additional comments?
Sure.
Okay. Again, I've been asking for citizen complaints, and I've not been able to get them. Mayor, when I asked you, I said I was frustrated, because we were supposed to be the oversight, and that we, we hadn't received a report or anything, because you said, "Yeah, we are the, the citizens oversight." And I said, "What have you received in the way of a report or oversight?" And Mayor, you said to me, "There hasn't been a, a citizen complaint." And I asked you if you really believed that, and you said yes. And yet...
I don't know what you're talking about, or when you asked me that.
About, when I was new on council, we had a conversation.
Not keep, make personal comments against people here.
You know, that we have not had, that I can't even get access to the information that a civilian oversight should be doing.
That's what we're trying to solve, Julie. You will get it now, or you can change it.
The model for the, for the advisory board does not include that. It, it isn't a part of that.
Then we'll ask for it. We can demand...
Okay, then you'll, you'll support that we are going to ask for regular reports, not, not dependent on what's coming from the advisory board, because that's not designed to do oversight. If we're going to be the oversight...
Chief, when we do your biannual report, would you include citizen complaints as a part of that report?
I need to step in and provide some clarification, Mr. Mayor, for the chief. So the decision point for you here tonight is to elevate the discussion of the council in its oversight functions of, of, of the police department. So I think, I think, I think the recommendation and the motion, at least the intent of the motion, is, is clear to me. To, to Councilmember Brown's comments specifically about sort of what are the roles and responsibilities of that oversight function will have to be defined in a, in a setting like this at some point in the future, up to and including what kinds of reports that are permitted to be given under state law. There are certain things that I can't even have access to as the chief executive, nor can a planning commissioner, excuse me, a police commission, or possibly even an auditor. So we are going to have to spend some time as a unit defining what those roles and responsibilities are, and defining them so that we understand the parameters by which we approach this issue going forward. So I just wanted to put that out for clarification. Yes, the reports that the chief will provide will be, I'm sure, lovely, will, will identify and spotlight the issues that I think are important from a policy perspective, but we're going to have to have discussions in 2021 about what is, what is the definition of roles and responsibilities, and what access to information does the public have versus the council, et cetera.
Thank you for that clarification. Now, Mayor, I got, I have just one last thing, if I may. And that is just, we've had a lot of discussion about the importance of independence and the oversight, and I'm just going to quote for the last time this, this document. In 2.8, it says, "We must examine civilian oversight in the communities where it operates and determine which models are successful and..." and determine which models are successful in promoting police community understanding." It says, "There are important arguments for having civilian oversight, even though we lack strong research evidence that it works. Therefore, we urge action on further research based on guiding principles of procedural justice to find evidence-based practices to implement successful civilian oversight." So, you know, that's coming from the Bible on policing. That's, that's what they're saying. And at this particular point in 2015, they weren't even sure. So I think we're making the right decision with this motion.
And I think going slow and getting it right, I think somebody said was absolutely the way to do it. Now can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Brown?
Yes, I support the motion.
Narum?
Yep.
Tessa?
No.
Tension?
Yes.
Mayor Thorne?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously?
No, it did not.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm, excuse me, with, um, councilor Tessa voting no.
And in fact, I, I do want to say, if the motion had been broken apart, I would have liked to have supported the 21st century update.
Okay, there being no further business before this, for this meeting, then we're adjourned.
Thank you.